Welcome, everyone. We'll call our council meeting to order. It is August 3rd, 2021. Before we get into our regular agenda this evening, including formal council introductions, et cetera, we have a special recognition for our recently former police chief, Sue Nurse. Peter, we have a short program here to recognize Sue's fabulous career here in Freeport.
Sure. I'll lead off a little bit. We, as many people know, Sue retired at the height of COVID lockdowns and hysteria, and we're still obviously dealing with a lot of that right now. But I think she timed it on purpose so that she could have an easy way out with avoiding any public humiliation like this. And then when she, I think you went to Florida for the winter, and then when you came back, we all said, hey, we've got to, we remember we were supposed to do something for you. And Sue said, no, 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 I don't know about that. But somehow, we finally got her here. We didn't have the chance, the council, myself, I know a lot of your staff, all of your staff, obviously, and a lot of the members of the public, or sorry, the other town departments did have a chance to thank you, Sue. But we wanted to, we all felt bad that we didn't have a chance to have a formal retirement party where the councilors could show up, and we had no opportunity to give you a little bit of a roast. So I want to say, for those that don't know, Sue was last chief for about four and a half years, left at the end of last year, so the beginning of this year, right at the new year, and worked for the town for over 37 years before that, starting as a ticket writer, dispatcher, reserve patrol officer, patrol officer, all the way up through the ranks. So did almost every job in the department except for custodian, which no longer is a job in the department. So she is one of those rare people that truly did everything in the department and lived and breathed Freeport Police for almost 40 years. So I think there's a lot of people in the community that share the sense of awe that a lot of us have to somebody that can, you know, I've been here nine years, and I can't imagine 31, almost 30 more years dealing, you know, in that scenario. So I just want to personally thank you for your dedication. It was great personally for myself to be able to work with you as chief, as lieutenant when I first started here. I enjoyed both of those things, and I know a lot of the people lined up behind you also appreciated having you around for a lot longer than I did. So thank you. I think a couple other people want to say a few things, and I know we also have a special guest who also has a presentation as soon as the council's done for you as well.
Or do you, do you want to? Why don't we hear from the department folks?
Oh, I don't know if any of the department folks wanted to speak, but Sue probably wants to speak. No, they weren't prepared, they weren't put on the stand to notice that they were going to be put on the stand tonight.
Acting Chief Goodman, this is your chance for leadership to step forward and...
You've got to do it from the podium, though, Nate, sorry. Yes, yep.
Can you hear from the podium? Does he need a little mic?
No, the mic is on at the podium.
I'm glad you're all here. I have some brief notes written up. So I'm on the spot here, and I can say, I guess I'll just start off by saying that we're fortunate to have had her leadership for 37 years. And I was fortunate enough to work with her for 25 of the 37 years. And as a young patrolman, starting off in the mid-'90s, it was an interesting time. And we had a chance to go through a lot of different issues as a town and as a police department. So I think the biggest takeaways I get from her leadership and working as her subordinate every step of the way through her career was that I learned a great deal of organization, compassion, and the ability to look at a situation and not just see it from a black and white, from a law enforcement perspective, from a humanitarian citizen person perspective, if that makes any sense. So it was, as a young officer, I was a patrolman, she was a sergeant. I had a chance to work as a sergeant, and she was a lieutenant, and then as chief. So it's, every step of the way, I had a chance to, I was always learning something, and a great deal of it came from her tutelage. So I'm a big fan of the fact that we have a responsibility to the town and the citizens to maintain law order and keep people safe, but also for personal accountability within the department. And I think that I really learned to appreciate that, working with Sue. And I would be remiss if I didn't call attention to the, really, the outstanding job she did, especially in a world dominated by essentially male chiefs throughout her era. She was really kind of a groundbreaker for Cumberland County, for Southern Maine, and for the state. So that's no small feat. That's actually a big deal. And I count her as a personal friend, and that's probably most important to me of all. But thank you, I appreciate that moment.
Very much, Chief. Anyone on the council like to add some comments? Councilor Riley?
Well, Sue, I'm sorry, I not recognize any vehicle you're driving down to the South Freeport Post Office anymore. But I would like to share that Long, a community spirit, and always gave time for people to ask questions and speak with her, and she would be very honest with them, down at the post office. We had a great meeting place. Now, I will also share with you, I think there is an opening on complete streets.
I thought you were going to throw that in there.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
I don't know if she's declared her permanent residency yet. I don't know if she's picked a state yet. That might sway her towards Florida for the...
Oh, no, no way. I've had the privilege of working with Chief Nurse on many sort of non-uniform teams. Chief was on our strategic revisioning downtown team, really at the very beginning stages. And man, she can move mountains and close streets. She got DOT to close that street right away. We're like, wait, this is going to be a difficult lift. Nope, not with her. It was done instantly. I've worked on our COVID relief fund with Sue, getting support when it was really needed for many families around town, and it was wonderful to work with her. Through Freeport Friends, she generously allows her antique, one of her many antique cars, a truck in this case, to deliver furniture and baby goods to families around town. She has done so many Dirty 30s projects with her antique automobiles, and my daughter was fortunate to be one of those. And her talents, of course, are not just when she's wearing a uniform. She is also an amazing quilter and a musician, and when COVID was first lifting, I begged her, I'm like, we need to hear music, will you please play? And that was like, we had no idea what our future was going to look like, if it was going to happen, but she was willing, and she, again, moved everything she could to make that a reality. And so this summer, she will be, she's already played and will be playing again. So it was, I say they're like non-uniform meetings because they were always so casual with her, and she's so approachable and lovable, and just, it's been such a privilege. But one day, we had a missing person in Freeport, and it was, you know, all hands on deck. And I know that Sue was out with all of you, searching to find this person that was missing. And the thing is, is that the next morning, we had one of our ongoing meetings, and Sue shows up in uniform, and I'm like, knowing she hadn't slept at all. And there she was with us still, because, you know, valuing everything and not sleeping at all. But the fact that she was in a uniform kind of struck me, because I'm always with her in a more casual fashion, and I'm like, man, she's all of those things and a kick-ass chief too? I was there, it just really hit me that day, and I was like, man, like, it just really blew me away. But my favorite story with her in uniform is that one time, we had a resident, and they were pulled over by the chief because their taillight was out. And then they said to me, we get complaints here and there about other things, but they said, what a pleasant experience it was being pulled over by Chief Nurse. I mean, if that doesn't say everything about her. I am really, really sad that you're not in this position, but you've got great people behind you, and like Chief Goodman, I'm lucky to call you my friend, and that's what matters most. So thank you.
Councilor Pilch?
So I was a relatively new counselor at a relatively contentious time for policing in America, and it was not an easy thing for me to do, to say, I've got to write the chief of police of the town and open a dialogue and start talking about these awkward topics. And it was a wonderfully surprising reaction that I got, where Chief Nurse was, you know, not only interested and eager to talk, but really, you were kind of at the forefront and already leading the discussions that I was going to ask you to start. So it's been fantastic. I appreciate your support, your openness, your approachability, and I look forward to working with a department that you've sort of crafted, and thank you for working on that. I appreciate it.
Other comments? Councilor Bradley?
Sue has been a longtime friend, and friend of friends, and friends of friends and friends. And I think the thing that distinguished her was she introduced to this community the notion that to be an effective police enforcement officer, you also needed to be a good and respected member of the community and engaged. She's done that. I think that distinguishes Freeport. It distinguishes her, and I hope it's a model for law enforcement for us forever. Thank you very much.
Chief, I've been on the council coming up on five years, and so I've, most of your tenure, in fact, I think I might have been at the first meeting when you were first sworn in as chief, and knew you before then, mostly through the school. And through all of my time on the council here, I don't think there's ever been an incident that we had a stiff discussion up here about the police department. And there was a consideration, and I think an understanding, that we didn't have to because you had things in hand. So that's a perfect example of your leadership, is that the local political body didn't have to deal with anything going on, and that's a reflection not only of you, but of everyone on the force. So I just want to say thank you for that and echo what was already said here entirely, especially that the department and its appearance and interaction in our community today is a direct reflection of your handiwork and your influence on crafting it. Thanks. We have a small presentation here of some flowers.
I'd say medium.
You're welcome to share, but not required.
I'll just say, like, less than a minute. So thank you for your kind words and generous, generous comments. I'm going to do this without being upset. Right, you win?
I have a word this time.
Okay. So I can be the chief and still have emotions, right? Yeah.
I think that's what's said, that's why you're you.
Yeah. So I certainly couldn't have... That was great, the ice, thanks, Barry. That was perfect. Now we can do it.
Sue, there are other public safety professionals here that can handle it. You can take tonight off.
And we have everybody here in case somebody gets hurt. Okay. That did it, Barry? Now I'm good. It's been a pleasure through the challenges and struggles. It's been a pleasure to serve the town that I live in. And I couldn't have done it without the support of, you know, everybody throughout my whole career. People have really shaped my career, and they really have helped me make decisions that really helped the town of Freeport. And that's huge, because I can't do it myself. I'm always telling people that police officers need everybody to help them in the community. And it's everybody's responsibility to make sure that people stay safe. And we are, that's certainly our job, but it's something that we can't do without the public. And so I really appreciate the citizens that have been there through my career. Some of them have passed on, and some of them are other places, but they certainly had an impact on my time. And I had the support of the department. And I probably should just sit down. I want to make sure that people know that these officers are top-notch, they are well-trained, they are well-educated, they are ready, ready to serve, and hopefully serve in the same way that they have been and will continue to do that. We've set up a good department, and I'm confident, because I live in town and I care, how they're going to be after I've passed the reins on to Nate Goodman and the rest of the crew. I appreciate you being here and supporting me throughout the whole...
Thank you.
So I don't know what else to say except that thank you, and on to the next adventure, right? Okay, thank you.
Hi, neighbor. I get to see chief walking our dogs every day at 6:00 AM, so, hi, chief. So my name is Molly Sacks, I'm the state representative, and my apologies that I did not get the words "kick-ass chief" on the legislative sentiment that has been in my home since COVID, since the COVID outbreak. But I would like everyone to know how much I also appreciate Chief Nurse, who I still continue to say Chief Nurse even at 6:00 AM. Morning, chief, how's it going, chief? And that, again, having been, served on the council for six years and being the executive director of community services, knowing that she puts the community and community policing in everything she does, and exactly what you just said about the tone, the professionalism of our amazing public safety crew, that's a direct reflection of you. So I would like everyone to know that the legislature, the House and the Senate, this has been signed by, hello? Okay, I'm sorry that I did the mic wreck, if you're back, or John. Be it known that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Susan Nurse of Freeport, who has retired as chief of the Freeport Police Department. Chief Nurse joined the department full-time in 1984, starting as a dispatcher and part-time police officer, and working up through the ranks, becoming the department's first female police chief in 2016. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 130th legislature and the people of the state of Maine, especially Freeport. Congratulations.
Again, thank you. I think I'll call it in unless somebody else has something to say. I was going to keep it together tonight, really, I was, but it's an emotional time because you're my people.
And you're ours.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
We're good?
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
We kept her a little bit longer. I did promise, I promised the band you'd be there at 6:45, so you're a little late, so. Thank you, chief. Thanks for coming, everybody in the department.
Thank you.
All right, we will begin our regular council meeting. Today is August 3rd. We're starting a little bit late, 6:52. Our first order of business is to find out who's here. I'll call roll. Councilor Lawrence?
Here.
Councilor Pilch?
Here.
Councilor Riley?
Present.
Councilor Daniele?
Here.
Councilor Bradley?
Here.
Councilor Whitney?
Here.
And the chief, John Egan, is here. Our next order is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Included in our packet was a representation of the minutes of our last meeting on July 20th. We'll take a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 17-21, held on July 20th, and accept the minutes as printed unless there are amendments or corrections.
Move to approve is written.
Second.
Any edits or comments? All right, all in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here.
Thank you, Sharon. Our next item on the agenda is announcements. I have a few to start, and then we can go down the row, and other councilors have items to announce. Nomination papers for the November 2021 municipal election are now available for the following offices in the town of Freeport. We have a counselor-at-large position and the District Four counselor position. Both of those are for three-year terms. The sewer district has three seats for three-year terms. The water district has one seat open for a three-year term, and the RSU is looking for candidates to fill two seats each for three-year terms. Nomination papers are due back at the town clerk's office by September 8th. Chris Wolf is our town clerk, and you can talk to her if you have questions about how to take those out or how to gather signatures. There will be an informational meeting for residents, butters, and property owners on Spar Cove Road regarding the road construction project on Spar Cove Road, starting at the end of August and early September of this year. That's when the project is designed to begin. The informational meeting is Wednesday of next week, August 11th, at 6:00, right here at Town Council chambers. So if you're in the area or frequent that part of Freeport, Spar Cove Road, there is a meeting next Wednesday to talk about the road construction and its plan. The Winslow Park Summer Concert Series is back. This week's concert, which will take place on Thursday, August 5th, at 6:00 PM, will feature Not Too Sharp, 6:00 to 7:30, all of your favorite songs with great fun and harmonies. Pack a picnic dinner, grab a blanket, and enjoy a lovely evening at the park with the whole family. I'd also like to remind the public that we are still looking for applicants for the Citizen Police Advisory Committee, and to learn more about that committee and other vacancies, you can contact Chris Wolf, our town clerk, 865-4743, extension 123, and her email is sewolf@freeportmaine.com. Remember, Chris has an E on the end of her name, W-O-L-F-E. Other announcements from fellow councilors? Okay, we have an abundance of public hearings, so I appreciate us being able to move through the front part of this agenda, so we can get to that. Our next item of business is information exchange. This is a chance for councilors to talk about committees, information, feedback from constituents, meetings that they've held in the public. Anyone like to share information on information exchange? Councilor Bradley?
I continue to have...
Thanks, Jake. I continue to meet with representatives of the Island Rover. I think that the process described for cleanup is underway and ongoing and agreed to. We're about to start discussions about the more critical issue, which is launch, and there is a commitment on the part of the parties to have a full sort of exposure of their views on that, to see whether we can get going. I would like, from my own knowledge, about how, since I'm doing this sort of, not for you, but in order to bring something to you, how you feel about how any launch plan should be vetted or approved by you, if, or by the town before implementation. And I guess the real question comes down to, are you going to want to see some kind of a, an expert in launching a vessel make a report to you before you'll have the confidence to accept it? Or are you happy to have the parties come up with a plan and maybe even have their own expert opinions about it? Do you want your own expert to guide you in the process? You've all been around this issue for a while, and I don't have any idea what you need individually to feel comfortable, and I'd like to go into the meeting with some idea, so I can make sure that that's on the table to start with.
I'll start at a minimum, I guess. In previous conversations, the discussion has involved transport to get to a launch site over public way, and so there was some consideration. I know we had a conversation here with our town engineer at one point. There was some consideration about impact on the public way from the size and weight of the boat. I think we actually heard most of that, that could probably be a five-minute conversation. Other concerns might be for private property that is adjacent to the public way, that may be impacted or need to be temporarily impacted for movement of, given the size and the weight of the Island Rover. Again, that can probably, it's not going to be, you know, new information for the folks involved. That's what they've been looking at for a long time. And then I guess if there's a specific request for town resources in order to make the launch.
The launch itself is going to, assuming there is a plan and it goes forward, is going to take a big boat and put it into shallow water on some sort of a conveyance. Is the council need or want to have a maritime expert verify that that can be done? Or the plan as proposed is doable? Or do you, are you happy to hear the experts on the other side? I'm not trying to put this in any particular context, but I can imagine people are going to want to hear from an expert that whatever plan comes up won't result in a derelict in the mud, Allah was casket. So do you, how do you want to get to your comfort about, around that, if you can? I mean, what would you need to be comfortable about that issue? You don't have to tell me now, but if you think about it, particularly if you want to have a maritime expert or, you know, some sort of marine engineer weighing in on that, there'll be some expense associated with that, and I'd like to talk to them about how they pay for it. I think that's fine, at least some form of neutral party saying, hey, this is a good plan. Of course, that doesn't guarantee that it is.
I understand. I, I, I'll wait and hear from, you can call me individually, this isn't formal, I mean, I'm not representing anything from the town, I'm just trying to get a plan together that I can present to you for your consideration, but I'd like it to be done with, you know, forethought.
I, yeah, I'd need more time to think about what that might be, but I know nothing about, you know, this kind of activity, so if there's, I would have to rely on others to tell me that it's, that it's okay.
Could I ask that the town explore, I mean, Peter, explore what kind of expertise you would like to see to make you comfortable as the town manager, as you review this plan?
Sure. I know last time there were, last time, when this was first discussed and last discussed, there was a potential move afoot, the two biggest stumbling blocks for the town. I think the council chair was correct that roads were a big consideration, blocking traffic, moving power lines, but it seemed like those things were all surmountable. So there were a lot of, a lot of details that needed to be ironed out, but that wasn't going to be the stumbling block. Access over private property was, which we know is going to be a big part of wherever this goes, they need to have permission to go over that strip of private land, essentially, between whatever the nearest road is and whatever the water body is. That's, that's one stumbling block. And then there was a lot of concern, and we never even got to this point, of exactly what you're asking, which is, how do we know it doesn't get out there and fall over because the mud can't support that much weight on that much square footage, you know, with that much pressure at that angle? To which, you know, we have an engineer, who's a civil engineer, who doesn't do marine clay soils analysis. Like, there's, you're going to need somebody who, you know, soil scientist, marine scientist, somebody like that, who can provide that, that information. Now, if the council wants to see it, if the council's going to ask staff, like, what do you think is going to happen when that weight goes in that location and it's lifted this way? My answer is, eh, they say it'll work. If you want more than that from me, we will... And then there was a lot of concern, and we never even got to this point, of exactly what you're asking, which is, how do we know it doesn't get out there and fall over because the mud can't support that much weight on that much square footage, you know, with that much pressure at that angle? To which, you know, we have an engineer who's a civil engineer who doesn't do marine clay soils analysis. Like there's, you're going to need somebody who, you know, soil scientist, marine scientist, somebody like that who can provide that, that information. Now, if the council wants to see it, if the council's going to ask staff, like, what do you think is going to happen when that weight goes in that location and it's lifted this way? My answer is, eh, they say it'll work. If you want more than that from me, we will probably need an outside scientist.
Will you look into what kind of expertise would give you comfort?
Yeah, I'll talk with our engineer about the type of people who deal with that kind of stuff. There are specialists who do, you know, marine soils and marine clay and all that stuff. So that was, those were the two big things that are in my memory from what John described as being things that need to be ironed out.
Counselor Riley?
Coming, coming up, we have workshops within the different districts. And it might be the ideal time to have this discussion when your workshop takes place, because then you have the residents of the community doing the input as well. And I'm sure there'll be a good turnout for it. So I would make the suggestion that we have this discussion on the night of your...
Do you know the date of that?
I don't know the date of it scheduled, but Peter, do you have the scheduled date?
I'll look it up, and I'll tell you both in a moment.
Happy to do that. All right. You get the feedback you needed, Ed?
Yeah, thanks. I have one question.
Sure.
Of you or...
Peter, a couple meetings ago, we learned, or I reported that I had learned that the RSU was deferring the funds, the use of the funds that it got from the state for education to a subsequent budget. And I thought that, given that the aid was designed to help the property taxpayer currently, that they ought to be thinking about spending it now. And there were some issues around that, and I understood there was going to be, from talking to Superintendent Foley, there was going to be an effort to organize a meeting to discuss the prospects, and I haven't heard anything about it.
Peter and I went to the meeting. Counselor Whitney was unavailable to go. It happened about 10 days ago. And the representatives from the political bodies of the other two towns in the RSU were there, Durham and Pownell, as well as a couple of members of the board and the superintendent. The finance officer for the RSU, who was also there as staff, explained the mechanical process of how they go about committing their budget and how the towns take the obligation to raise taxes on behalf of the RSU and incorporate it into their process. And as you might expect, the three towns have three different processes. And so the RSU has to navigate three different processes when it's going through how it handles its budget. Earlier in June, their overall budget was approved, and that set in motion a series of administrative sequences. It sounds like I'm talking around the issue, and it's because it's very complex about how the RSU can actually go about essentially rebating some of their commitment with the additional funds that were made available to them. After about 40 minutes of conversation and explanation by the RSU, they recommended that they hold that dollar amount for the subsequent school year and apply it to their school year, which would be the 22, 23, I think, if I got that right. And so my concern was to make sure that that didn't get lost. And they were already anticipating that and have agreed to actually take the additional dollar amount that was supplementally applied or allocated to the school district, and they're going to put it in a reserve account. And so that reserve account will be visible. And the RSU starts its process in January for budgeting for the next school year, the year that we're talking about. And so I plan on attending several of those meetings in the spring to make sure that that reserve account stays where it is. And then when they get to the completion of their process, which is about the end of April, that that would be when that reserve account would be applied to the levy that they're planning to pass on to the three towns.
Good work. Thank you.
Right. I think they agreed to show, or at least to explore showing it as a separate line on the forms as well for the budget, which they don't currently do. Because that was a question that I know Counselor Bradley, a couple other people had expressed, like, you know, you say that it's going to be there next year, but how do we know it doesn't get absorbed into the baseline calculations for their budget? And they said, well, we can show it as a separate line, or at least they're going to investigate whether they can show that on their budget. So a little bit, maybe more transparent than in the past, where the money has still been there, but it's just been into a giant lump sum, so.
Right. The RSU budget has 11 or 13 articles on it as a municipal warrant. And this will be right in there, in the listing, so that the general public will be able to see that the legislative allocation that occurred in, after their budget was approved in July of '21 will be applied to the 22, 23 school budget.
Thank you very much for your work.
Mr. Chair, I think there's also, we had, there was a little wrinkle in that discussion too, which is that even if they did decide to go ahead with it this year, there was going to have to be a little bit of legal wrangling done, because the town of Durham's already appropriate, has already committed their taxes. And they were unsure, in a town meeting town, whether they had the ability to go back and adjust that tax commitment backwards. So even if they had decided that they wanted to go along with that, it may have failed for, because the three, the three towns are on different schedules. Pownell would have been able to adjust, probably Freeport definitely would have been able to adjust our tax rate downward for this year. Durham may have created legal issues for them. So we are definitely sympathetic to their schedule.
I know we have a particular item from Counselor Pelch, but before we get to that, any other items for information exchange committees?
Well, on the education topic, can I just point out that we got our state representative in the audience who was instrumental in getting us those extra funds for the RSU? So thank you, Counselor Sax, or Representative Sax.
Go ahead, Ed.
Additionally, while we're on the Sax family, we hired back at the beginning of the summer an intern who was shared between the town and FEDC. And part of the charge, the intern, was to help with grant, identifying grant opportunities. And luckily, I got a chance to work with the intern on some communications issues, which has always been sort of a pet project of mine to see if we can better communicate with our residents over more channels. So the intern is Peter Sax, who's here, and I've asked him to address the council and share some of the things that he's found out about the way we communicate as a town and maybe some opportunities for improving that. Please do.
So first, as a bit of background, I want to talk about what we are already doing for communication. Most of our communication plan comes from a old communication, communications plan from 2013 that calls for variety of changes, notably getting our, I'm getting our council meetings and other things streamed online, as well as establishing a social media presence and a town newsletter. So currently, we have met most of these goals. We currently have a Facebook page with 1,200 subscribers, a newsletter with 270 subscribers, a, as well as some limited newspaper ads, and of course, the TV, which is...
Streamed, of course. I imagine all of you out there know that.
See here, oh yeah, we also have a opt-in emergency text system, which is used during emergencies, heat waves to get, to send out cool locations people can go to if they don't have AC, just the opposite if they don't have heat in winter, and as well as just any sort of natural or man-made disaster. Sadly, that only has, that has very few subscribers, and current attempts to expand that list have not really borne fruit. We also have a, of course, town website that is maintained by various members of the town's staff, who generally focus on their, their fields as a sort of side job to whatever main department they are working for. All in all, combined estimate of between three and five hours a week for the amount of time Freeport staff spend on communication and on Facebook, on anything. So the big problem that is facing our current communication is simply we don't have enough outreach, we don't have enough subscribers. We have, what, 8,500 people in this town, and we are only reaching at most around an eighth of them. So after, so as part of my project, I researched and spoke to other towns that have faced similar problems and came up with a couple of solutions. So the first thing that we should do is let people know that our current resources are out there. Try to get what I call zero effort engagement. This isn't, right now, we have all the, all these resources out there that I just said. But in order to find them, you have to specifically set out to look for it. If we have a, if we have information ranging from a planning meeting to a, to an emergency broadcast, most of our communicate, most of our communication methods will only, will only reach people specifically looking for, specifically looking for, or already subscribed to our channels, which isn't very useful if we want to get brought, something broad-based. So, so I suggest zero effort, zero effort engagement, something that, a form of engagement that people don't have to look out, look out for, that lets them know that this is out there. This can range from something that Falmouth did. They sent out fly, when they launched their newsletter, they sent out flyers to every address in town that had, that had all the information about the newsletter and how you could sign up for it. They also send out, copy their newsletter again every tax season. And so that way, everyone in that town knows exact, knows that this channel of information is out there, and they can get that information. Also, other ideas include setting up, I'm setting up a sort of signpost with this information at places where people in town visit. I was talking specifically with Counselor Pelch about setting them up at Shaw's and Bow Street Market, because everyone in town has to eat, everyone visits there. And so if we want people to non-intrusively know that we have these resources, we should post that we have them there. As well as possibly, especially for emergency announcements, getting a list of more local influencers, people who have more established social media presence than the town. Like, for example, both to, for emerg, just generally to utilize for emergency announcements and to let people know that we have these resources. For example, I know our lovely state representative currently has a newsletter of her own. Yeah, yeah. Currently has a newsletter of her own that has, that has several hundred more subscribers than the town's newsletter. Even thing, even things such as, I actually checked this right before the meeting. Buck's Barbecue in Freeport currently has 10,000 Facebooks, Facebook likes and subscribers as opposed to the town of Freeport's 1,200. So if, now, of course, there are probably, you know, tourists and people out of state who do subscribe to that. But I do believe that right now Buck's Barbecue currently has the ear of Freeport more than the town of Freeport. So we can, we can, we could utilize that to get out emergency messages. If they, if they are willing to, if they're willing to do so, obviously, just reach out, talk to people. So zero effort engagement, that's the first step. If we do nothing else, I suggest that we do that, just let people know that these resources are available in case they, we need them. For more general social media stuff, I suggest that we set out explicit social media, more explicit social media policies for town communications. A constant theme when talking to the various people who maintain our town's communications currently is that there aren't really rules. So the, so they generally either set rules for themselves or just don't post things because they don't want to step on anyone's toes or, or create a precedent that they don't want to take responsibility, that they don't really want to take responsibility for. So more clear social media rules set by the town will counterintuitively actually raise the, the amount of posts we can make and raise engagement and get more information out there. And finally, and possibly most importantly, I suggest that we do hire a social media coordinator, manager, some salaried position in the town. Right, and other towns have, that do have this, generally spend between 25 and 40 hours a week putting together communications as opposed to hour three. They have, they also, across the board, have much wider communication and more frequent communication put together. And so it would be very helpful if we were to centralize all these disparate town, town communicators, people who maintain our social media, and just move it, just move it into one department, one person who does this full-time and will be able to do this as their full-time job, and be able to do this to the full extent necessary as opposed to have half a dozen to a dozen different people just doing it as one of their many responsibilities. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
I hope that this is laying the foundation for ongoing discussion. I know there are a few things that Peter uncovered that I'd like to kind of pursue. I don't know that we're ready to say, hey, here's an action item for our next meeting, but, but I don't want to let it fall by the wayside either. There's some pretty interesting things that, that, that we've identified, some of which are relatively easy to do, so. So I'd like to continue the discussion.
If we could get it on to the other business section at our next meeting, and we can have a little more extended conversation on an evening when we don't have eight public hearings. But thank you very much. Appreciate the, the work that went into that. Thank you, Peter. All right. Moving along on our agenda, the next item is, well, let me just make sure, is there any other items for information exchange? Next item is town manager's report. Peter Joseph.
All right. In light of our eight public hearings and four business items that we have audience members for here right now, I'll be brief. I do want to point out that we've had, I would say, staffing shortfalls, natural staffing shortfalls due to people leaving for various reasons, all explainable retirements, you know, moving, things like that. And, but as a result of the current job market, we have several positions that are becoming very difficult to fill, not just for municipal work, but you know, you're seeing this everywhere. So we are in the same job market that all the other people that are struggling for help are. For example, we're looking, our town clerk's department usually has two people because they're open 44 hours a week as opposed to 37 hours a week that the staff person works. So as part of that, we're having the town clerk's office close at five, because we're expecting that down a person, that they're going to be at least one to two months, kind of an extended single person working in that department. So job opportunities that we have open right now, so anyone who's interested out there or knows someone who's interested, please look on our website, freeportmaine.com/departments/employment. So it's the employment tab under departments. There is a list of all of the job openings that's, that we have currently. It's updated relatively frequently, so there might be more when you go to look at it. Hopefully not, too many. We are looking for a deputy town clerk in the clerk's office. We are looking for a deputy tax collector and bookkeeper in the finance office and essentially my tax collector assistant position. We are looking for a custodian for the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Department. We are looking for an equipment operator slash truck driver for the Public Works Department. We are looking for police officers. I think we're always looking for police officers. I think everyone's always looking for police officers these days. It's one of the hardest positions to fill in municipal work. We've had pretty much an open application process for police officers since, since before Chief Nurse was chief. And we will very shortly be hiring for a fire chief. I announced at the recent meeting that our fire, our chief is retiring, second retirement for him. So we've got at least six open positions right now, a couple others that we're kind of in the process of filling, which is good, where we've got candidates for, but these need attention. So if you know anybody who works in municipal government, we're pretty, you know, we've got a great leadership team from, from leadership down. More importantly, the staff is actually fun to work with, and they make working for me bearable. So anybody that, anybody that wants to learn more, by all means, please check out our website or talk to anyone in the town hall. or talk to anyone in the town hall. Go find a stranger and ask them if it's nice to work here and see what they have to say. Hopefully they'll say yes and they'll, they'll sell you on it. Third, I'd like to thank specifically over the past couple of weeks, our public works department and our buildings and grounds department. So that's Earl Gibson and crew and Brent Moon and crew. And those two departments, they've been doing a lot of, had a, both of those departments in the middle of summer, their busiest, one of their busiest times of the year, have had a lot of things thrown at them. You know, some of our special projects that we've just been telling them, hey, go drive over here and pick up this thing and drop it over here and set up this park and move a bunch of park furniture out in front of the town hall and go get a, pick up a piano and go get a skate park equipment and go do this. And everybody in those two departments has not blinked an eye. Where usually people, in the past, sometimes people would say, ah, it's not my job, blah, 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 blah. People are dropping stuff and just being like, I'll chip in and go in and doing things. And that's in large part due to, to Earl and Brent and their leadership. So I want to thank them. Also, I know we had some individual projects. We had some public works employees that were doing some painting in the streets and probably some more painting going on. I know we had a crew over here painting some Freeport High School color sidewalk, crosswalks. We had down at Bow and, and Main Street, we had Howard and Tammy from the public works department. Tammy was our admin assistant and Howard went out and painted lobsters in the middle of that white little teardrop there. So everyone's chipping in. You've got the office staff, you've got the, the crew, you've got everybody. So just a huge thanks to those, those departments. And last but not least, speaking of the public works department, this one is a solicitation. We are looking for more places to drop off Phil from roadside ditching projects. So, and I do need to point out, because this is sometimes an issue, they are limited in the amount that they can drop. They cannot fill in an entire hillside. Anything over 200 yards needs a, 200 yards or more, I believe, needs a Phil permit from the town. So, but they can drop off 20 yards, 100 yards, 150 yards if you need it, of Phil for your projects. So if you're interested, call the Public Works Garage, 865-4461, get on the list. And as they're doing projects, they go down and they'll just call you, you know, hey, we're going to be in your neighborhood. We've got, you know, X truckloads or X yards, can you take that much? And they'll deliver it. So otherwise, we have to pay to handle it twice and move it around and put it up at the landfill and use it for other projects and things like that. So help us out and we'll help you out. So that's all I got, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Council Riley.
I just would like to thank Public Works for the parklet that's in front of DeRosier's. And judging by the way that the trash can was stuffed with, it certainly is a draw and a positive sign that things, vision can be put into purpose. So thank you to the Public Works for setting that up. Maybe Jersey barriers are not the real thing for that, but something in case I wanted to drive through it, it would be a better thing to have the Jersey barriers. Thank you.
They're about as heavy as we can get on a drop of a hat. I mean, we'll need to, if it's going to be permanent, we need to make it a little more protective.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public participation on non-agenda items. So if you are visiting us here in town hall and would like to address the council, this is the chance to bring concerns, comments, maybe even accolades about what we're doing right as a community for things that are not on our agenda. And we can open this up for anyone who would like to address. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Andrew Arsenal. I'd like to address an item that was just brought up by our intern, which was public notice and public how to reach the public. Ed will probably remember years ago when he or I were on the council together, we fought, I fought very hard to have public notices put in the paper. And I can still pick up the paper and read what's going on in North Yarmouth, Yarmouth, Falmouth, Cumberland, but I don't see much about what's going on in Freeport as far as a notice on what's going on in the forecaster and stuff like that. And I don't subscribe to a paper and I don't have cable TV, so I pick up papers. And I think it'd be a simple thing to, much like these other towns do, is to have a notice in the paper where we can say what's going on at the local meeting or at least the council meeting or whatever. Seems like I've fought this issue for 20, 30 years and it, I don't think it's an institutional thing, but it seems that Freeport is not always in there. So it would be great if we could put that on our list of things to notify Freeport residents because at Shaw's and all these places, there's always a forecaster, there's always a, a free paper to pick up. So it just takes somebody in the town hall or somebody that reports for those people to send them the notice. And I'm sure they'd be glad to give us a little free print ad. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Andy. Duly noted, particularly if it's free. I'm not sure if it's free, but we'll find out.
Free to us.
Free to us, yes, right, to pick it up. Anyone else like to address the council on non-agenda items this evening? Great. All right. We will move on from public participation on non-agenda items. Our next order of business is to take action on the following items of business as read by the council chairperson to consider action relative to adopting the August 3, 2021 consent agenda. Take a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. You have a copy of the consent agenda in your package. It is a listing of recommendations from the appointments committee for filling vacancies on a number of boards and committees, renewals of several victular licenses, and also permission by Visit Freeport for use of town property. Anyone see any reason to take any of those items off of the consent agenda and bring them forward for conversation?
I don't need to take it off, but can you just explain what the use of town property is by Visit Freeport?
Sure. The Makers on Main project. So I, I believe it's mostly the town hall that's covered by this one. They've had previous permission for use of other buildings, so.
Thank you.
Is it a one-time event or is it forever?
It's this, this fall. So I want to say August, September, and I don't think they're going into October. So it'll be a couple of weekends. But it won't be next year, for example.
All right. Any other questions? We ready to vote on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is adopted. Our next item is number 145-21. Councilor Whitney, could you please read the item?
To consider action relative to an ordinance to award a contract in the amount of $10233 to principal group for the completion of phases two and three for the downtown Freeport Vision Plan. And I am actually going to join my partner in this program down on the floor to give you a little update.
Need a motion to open? Yeah, we're, motion to open the public hearing first? Or are you, are you a part of the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. We need to, we need to officially open.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Public hearing is open. Thank you.
Fifteen minutes, huh? Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, we'll be under that unless you have a lot of questions.
Hi, I'm Mary Davis, I'm president of the DC. And as you know, because we've been in front of you, I think every few weeks, for months and months.
We have been working on the Freeport Downtown project. And what we wanted to bring you today is some photographs and some pictures of the work that's been done. As we know, in the first phase, this is really all about gathering information from the community. So you've seen all the information that we got from the residents, from folks who visit Freeport and from the businesses about what they wanted in downtown Freeport, which is the first portion of this project. So now we feel like we have a good idea of what people want. There was a lot of consensus around that. And in the early action projects, then it was about trying to implement some of what looked like easy projects to implement for several reasons. One, to keep gathering community engagement, to also trial smaller projects to see what worked, what were the sticky points, how we got around them and what we needed to do so that we learn on smaller projects and not on the bigger projects that are in front of us. And also just to continue to create free excitement about what is going on in Freeport. We want people to think that Freeport is a great place to be and to do business. We think that that excitement where we're all worried about the vacancies, however, the excitement about people being here and coming here is what's going to create the excitement that will bring businesses here. So that's what we've been doing in trialing these projects. So thank you, Caroline. I can't sit there, my arms aren't long enough and I can't get that here. So what we wanted to do is show you some pictures of what we've done. So remember, this was to test really the community activism inhabiting here. So as we looked at the projects that we brought to the town council, oh, a couple months ago, go ahead to the next slide. What we identified is about 15 projects that we said, let's trial them. And the first one that we had on is let's try a parklet because what people said is we want places to be in Freeport. We want to be able to enjoy and sit. So we said, let's create this parklet. Looks like a pretty easy thing to do, right? Not so much.
And it also takes these illustrations to actually bring these business owners on board with, with the idea. We, we met with Phil to tell him about this project and it wasn't until we actually showed him the rendering that he said, oh, wait, yes, yes, I do want that in front of my business. And so today, we went from this illustration to this blank space. We appropriated some, two parking spots to this parklet. And then today, it went up. It was so easy, Peter said, let's not. And so today, this is what it looks like, this is what it looks like empty, although after it went up, I don't think it's been empty again since, since it went up. So it's been great.
And the exciting thing about this is that businesses were involved. This is furniture from Bean offered to put their furniture in. We had plans that were given to us from Garden Spot. We had volunteers like all of the town group who helped to build it and put it in place and bring the Jersey barriers here. So this is really a great example of tactical urbanism at its very best because it wasn't a bunch of us who were doing, it was a whole bunch of people who were doing the work.
Well, and what Caroline asked was she asked if a town person would go down and talk to each business owner down the block to get their buy-in. And so I met Phil and said, I'll be down to do this with you. But Phil had already done it. And so he did it a lot better than I, you know, when we went to these businesses again together, they were like, yeah, 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 we're all for it.
So go ahead to the next slide. So, and you're going to see more. Phil has already gone out to find flowers on the top of the Jersey barriers because he doesn't think it's pretty enough and he wants to make sure it's a nice place for people, his visitors, to sit. And you can see, you know, we already have lunch crews there. And as you're driving by, you're going to see more. We want this idea of the parklet and how do we measure its success? We see how many people are there and what they say about it. So that's our parklet idea. That went in today. Go ahead to the next slide. So the next thing we talked about is let's create another park. So we looked at this parklet and worked on getting that. That one was a little more challenging for us because it's actually owned by several different people and there's rights of ways. So we said, okay, a learning in this is pick something that's easy to do first, but you have the same success rate. So go ahead. So we went to the town and Peter said, hey, you know what? We own that park behind Starbucks. So we went to walk the park with Earl, thank you, Earl, and we walked around and said, wow, that didn't look very good. Geez, wouldn't it be nice if it looked better? So go ahead. So Earl came and walked around with us. We brought together a group of volunteers who this past Saturday, we cleaned it up, we brought mulch in, we cut the bushes, the hot dog man who, I'm sorry.
Dale.
Dale. Hot dog.
He's been there 30 years.
He's been there 30 years with this hot dog park. He is thrilled to have this there because there's always, as Alex says from Bean, there are always lines in this park and it didn't look very nice. So go ahead. So now, the, again, furniture from Bean has been delivered. So here we also have furniture from Bean. We have the, the Freeport Historical Society who is saying, hey, I want to put in a piece of artwork on the wall. I want to help clean it up. Geez, can we move those bricks? Can we put it over here? Can I bring my volunteers in? Go ahead. And look what it looked like today. We had lots of people in there. And these, this is not, this is not your town manager and your council. These are people who were truly there eating noodles and sitting. And this cute couple said, you know, isn't it nice to have this park here where we can sit and nurse babies? So here again is a good example of the town and the residents and the visitors said, we want a place to be. And it wasn't that hard to create a place to be.
And it was also zero dollars. This was all just manual labor and bringing things in.
Including, I had a hardware store, believe it or not, in Auburn who gave me the mulch for free. Don't, you just got to ask. Go ahead to the next slide. Okay. So now we started talking about, let's do traffic calming and we looked at murals that were out. Well, we realized that, you know, because it's Route One, maybe DOT doesn't like us painting in the middle of the streets. So we said, okay, we're going to try something different. So go ahead. So then we said, okay, we're just going to paint the crosswalks. We're going to paint crosswalks. We're going to create something that looks like you're in town. So instead of driving really fast and all you have to do is look out this window, people are not doing 20 miles an hour, is give them something to look at which slows traffic. Because the whole idea is if you slow traffic, it makes people think that they're in, in communities. So we had great folks who went out and painted.
And this is Earl's design, by the way.
Yeah.
He said, I want, I want lobsters on the street. So Earl actually designed that himself.
So continue. And as you notice, there are picnic tables in the town park, there are games in the town park because again, we want to create parklets for people to be in. This is our town hall, so why not create a parklet here?
So keep on.
Okay. So and the last one is, we're starting to work on this kids' outdoor park. We believe, the kids said to us, we want a place to hang in downtown Freeport and we don't have any place to hang. They hang in front of CVS, which is a crazy thing. So we're starting to work on, go ahead. The town again has some parking space down by where the train station is and we're starting to build a bit of a kids' park with some donated materials that we've got. We want to see what happens. So those are our trial projects. Go one more. And I do want to say, thank you to Earl and his team. I literally spent today, I was driving around behind where he had been and every time I got there, I said, where is Earl? And there was like, you know, he's that way.
Now they're in there.
And I do want to thank everyone who has been so helpful in us getting this done. It's the businesses, it's the volunteers, it's the people on the council who are supporting us, it's the folks in the town who are helping us think about creative ways to work within ordinances. So it takes a community to get Freeport Downtown the way we want it. This is the first step. This is the easy step. And our phases two and three in the project will be a more detailed plan about what we want with projects, resources, how much money we'll need. And we'll be back in front of the council over the next six months to bring that to you. But these are the first steps of what we've done and I think we're encouraged by what we're seeing in the support that we're getting. So.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so any members of the public who are here would like to comment, please step up to the podium, share your thoughts.
The mic is yours.
I have been one of the civilians that's been working with the principal group and I've been amazed by the way that they have been organized and were able to organize the citizens and the number of responses that they got, even in the middle of a pandemic when we couldn't do the normal, which was get a big workshop, do the smaller groups, come back together, discuss everything. So I was really happy with the way that they did it and I hope we could continue. They have a lot of knowledge now about our town. And now that COVID restrictions have been lifted, they've seen our real traffic patterns. They've heard from a lot of the residents and I think it would be a shame to lose that much knowledge and go with a group that knows nothing about us and they would have to start from square one.
Thanks, Joyce.
I'd like to throw my support behind what they're doing here with these things downtown. I'd also like to say that one of the things I think we need to think about on the backside of this is, much like I heard this discussion tonight earlier when we talked about painting stuff on the streets, is it a historic color? And I think at some point we need to, when Freeport was developing downtown, things were happening really fast. We imposed a lot of regulations and a lot of design review issues. And that was a great idea, I think. I mean, I was sort of opposed to most of it, but we'll, we'll say it's a great idea. But now we've got to the backside of this issue where we're trying to, all that growth has gone away, a lot of it has. We're trying to fill storefronts. Freeport is pretty much built out in the downtown and we need to probably take at some point a conceptual look on what ordinances don't we need anymore and how can we be in this environment a little more spontaneous and a little more, just let's try something and let's not let all the rules get in our way of moving forward with what's going to be maybe a different Freeport. It'll be still our Freeport, it'll still be nice, but it wasn't be the Freeport we were regulating 20, 30 years ago when it was growing every week and we were coming to planning boards and somebody was building something new every month. So I think we need to take that into consideration and the town council, maybe an ad hoc group or somebody can start to look at those and charge somebody, think about it, how do the regulations we have now hold us back and how can we change those regulations to make the future good again? So I would encourage us to think about those issues as we go through this process, what holds us back that we don't need anymore as a regulation. as we go through this process. What holds us back that we don't need anymore as a regulation? So I'd encourage that. And I encourage what they're doing downtown. I think we need to do more traffic calming. I think we need to put a little more parking back on Main Street in certain spots to slow things down. So it looks like you're actually downtown. When I drive through the old port, you drive down Exchange Street, it's the most crowded street in Portland. And it's the busiest section of town. So parking on Main Street or parking in places is really not an issue. So that's my encouragement. And I hope it goes forward. And I think they're doing a great job. And I'm glad to see stuff happening because it's taken all summer. So we need to start moving forward more so that next summer, we even have more stuff done. So, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. I have to get your phone number, Andy. So when we have a committee on revising land use ordinance, we're going to call you up to participate.
You gotta turn the X.
Yep. Great.
Finally getting that wish, huh?
Put your red pen.
Been a while.
So the public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to address the council on this particular issue or comment about the plan that has been presented? All right, it looks like we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Further conversation, we've had the item read before we move forward with a vote. Any comments or conversation about the action we're taking here on item number 145-21? Counsel Bradley.
Yeah, I am a supporter of Principal Group. I'm an admirer of Mary and Tony's effort. I appreciate the work that the town is putting into this. And I'm being asked to vote to continue the process by approving $100,000 of taxpayer money, which if we are going to get where we are going, I believe we need to spend. So if, in that context, I'd like you to consider my questions. And I've raised them before at the earlier table, not knowing what table I was at exactly. And that's my first point. I think that the imagination of the revisioning and the collection of views from literally thousands of people is important. But I also know that no one who answered any of those questionnaires offered to run a project or to contribute a dime or a dollar to this. They were free to think in response and did. And that was important for us to get. But the next stage, and the important stage, is going from the imagining of the revisioning and the prioritization of projects to the implementation. And I worry, having been involved in two major projects in this town in the last 10 years, that that process is not as envisioned as the imagination that is prompting the principal group's early actions. I was frankly encouraged by Mary's presentation about what's already happened because I hadn't heard it that way, never seen it listed. I mean, I've heard it anecdotally. And I'd never heard it described as a learning process. And I think that's important to keep in mind. But I also think it's important to start now. And I don't know how Principal Group does this or how we do this, to identify the actors in town that are going to be responsible for the larger projects and the more significant ways in which Freeport reinvents itself, which is coming. And I'll just make a statement because I believe it to be true, that in voting for this $100,000 for Principal Group's contracts, which I intend to do, I anticipate I will be voting in the future on hundreds of thousands of dollars through TIF or other ways to implement this project. I'm not doing this, I'm casting my vote knowing that this town is going to be asked to spend taxpayer money, significant amounts of taxpayer money, to implement whatever comes out of the principal group's plan. And I think it's important for every counselor to know that when they cast their vote. Because if you're not prepared to at least consider that when you see what the priorities are, I think we're misleading ourselves and the rest of the town. There'll be others. I don't mean that we'll be alone. But I think that if we don't take the lead, it won't happen. So that was, that's sort of my unease coming into this process. This is just the first step in getting this done. And the effort's amazing. And I appreciate an approval, as I said. But I think we need to start getting practical about implementation.
That's all I got. Other comments or questions? All right, Counsel Whitney, could you please read the beat ordained? And then we'll be ready to vote.
Be it ordained that the ordinance to award a contract in the amount of $100,233 to Principal Group for the completion of phases two and three for the downtown Freeport Vision Plan be enacted.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Double seconds.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero, Sharon. I'm counting everybody tonight. Lost track last week. Dan, when you weren't here, I was counting seven.
I heard.
Our next item is item number 146-21, to consider action relative to a consent agreement from Robin LePointe for a property at Eight Tumblers Hill Road, for the purposes of allowing a mislocated building that does not appear to meet the required setbacks for underlying zoning district be allowed to remain. We are opening a public hearing. Counselor Bradley, could you please make the motion?
Let me go open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. We have the applicant this evening. I assume that you'd like to address us as your, that would be helpful to explain. We have a memo, but hearing right from the affected individuals helps a lot. Please introduce yourself to the podium. Thank you.
I'm Robin LePointe, and I live at Eight Tumblers Hill. And I have submitted a consent agreement for you to consider tonight, agreeing to give a variance for my property that appears to cross the setback of the town from when it was constructed. I'm the second owner of that property. It was not, it didn't come, it wasn't an issue for my bank. It didn't come up as an issue. But it is now coming up as an issue. Peter, the town manager, did have some questions that some of you had. And Ed had raised them to me as well. One had my neighbor been approached. We did approach to him. He was considerate and willing to make some land swaps, but he's not in a position to do that right now. He's some liens on his property. And we did look at boundary surveys and hiring someone, but nobody's available as far out as eight months. And we called lots of people that we knew through our contacts and agency. So my property is for sale and under contract right now. So it's a two feet for the garage. It's a home on one side that the garage is over by two feet and the house is over by eight to 10 feet.
And that's the setback that's in place now for the zone that your house is located in? I don't know the district off the top of my head. But that, the encroachment that you're talking about is beyond what is the recommended zoning setback for that area?
Correct. We're in District Two.
Okay. And you mentioned that when you purchased the house, this didn't come up?
No. We got our mortgage, no problem at all.
Right. And how did you find out? I think we had this clarified, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing right. How did you find out that this is now quote unquote-
When my buyers mortgage company raised the question, when it came up through their surveyors for the MLIP.
Right, right. Okay. And at this point, though, the town hasn't issued any kind of a violation that you're encroaching on the setback?
No.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind just staying by, in case the counselors have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Counsel Lawrence?
Is it just the setback? You're not over the property line?
No, nowhere near it.
Counsel Riley?
With the discovery of the violation of the setbacks, was that a Class D survey?
Peter, do you know what kind of survey it was? It's for the MLIP. It's for the mortgage-
It was a mortgage loan survey. It wasn't a full monumented boundary survey. I don't know the technical type.
I don't either.
Maybe our code enforcement officer would know if that was a Class D survey? Oh, and please stay there.
Yeah, so a Class D survey, that language hasn't been around for probably 20 or 30 years. That's what everybody calls a mortgage loan survey. Mortgage loan survey is not really a survey. It's basically the mortgage company asks a survey company to go out for a couple hundred dollars, usually like $200 or $300. And they go out, they don't do any deed research. They don't actually do any actual field work, other than they, a lot of times they go out at night and other things like that. They're not a very accurate document. But to answer your question, they don't call them a Class D survey anymore, but it's similar to what that was.
I haven't been off the zoning board of appeals that long where we didn't call it a Class D survey. Is it the same thing as a Class D survey?
I think probably so. You'll see on a lot of them, they don't even show monumentation. They won't show a lot of stuff on there. And they'll say that this document is not a survey. It's only used for the mortgage company and things like that.
Okay. And so you can stand aside and, but wait, I'll come back to you. Now to our owner. In the town, we have a number of different boards, one of which being the zoning board of appeals. Why didn't you bring it before them?
Because of the timing. Working with you and making this request to the council is within the timing of my closing for my house. It became aware to me during the under contract period of time. I've only known really since I've brought this consent agreement to the town.
And so how long of a period are we talking about now?
The time period is 30 days. But not 30 days from now. We're well into those 30 days. I have just a few more days. My time period is, I think, the 15th of the month.
Right.
Could be one day shy of that.
So you would not have been able to have had it on the agenda for the board of appeals meeting that was held on Monday night of this week?
I didn't know about that. I approached my counselor and asked about this consent agreement. That was what was suggested by the title attorney for the buyer. And I really didn't know a lot about this. And that's what direction I followed.
And now for the code enforcement officer. Would this have been the proper place to have gone to the board of appeals on this?
There is currently a mislocated building appeal that is in, currently in our zoning ordinance. The board of appeals doesn't accept mortgage loan surveys anymore due to several of them that have been issued variances on a mortgage loan survey. And months after the survey is done and they show that they're off 10, 15 feet, I mean, the mortgage loan surveys are not a very accurate document. So, but we were not asked to put it on the agenda. But we would ask, we would request that a boundary survey be done. So when they actually issue a variance, we know exactly down to the inch what is actually being requested.
So you would prefer to see this come before council?
Rather than going before- I'm not making any recommendations to come before council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Other comments or questions? Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, I am the District Two counsel that helped shepherd LePointe through this process. And had several conversations with the council about this, including consideration of Doug's concerns about the fact that it didn't go to the board of appeals. And as a result of the conversation that occurred up here, I believe that this was the most appropriate way it was done in the timeframe that LePointe had to close. So any concern regarding it being the wrong place is my problem. But, you know, in defense of me, it was after two pretty lengthy conversations up here and a confirmation that this was the place to come. That's just informational. The other piece of information that I think is, at least to me, important is, Robin and Alan, what are your plans? What happened after you sell this property? What do you, where do you plan to be?
Half a mile down the road.
Yeah, this is not a sell in deep back. This is a sell and commit, probably to a much greater degree, into the community. So that matters to me. And they're great neighbors and they're great-
People in the community. So I certainly hope will support the consent agreement so they can close their property and move on with their lives.
Counsel Pilch? Have the neighbors on that side of the property been notified? And are they okay with the variance? They don't have a problem with the building being too close?
No.
My other question is maybe for the town manager, maybe for the council. But I don't have a problem with the building and setback. It's all fine. I think it's okay. My question's about the process. Are we setting a precedent that anybody who has a building that they think might be mislocated should now take a shortcut, go right to the council because it takes too long to get a boundary survey and skip the processes that we have in place for the people that we've appointed to make those decisions? So with sympathy for the LePoints, and I don't want to throw things out of whack for them, but it seems like this might not be the last time we see an issue like this. And I'm not sure that council is the right place to deal with these kinds of issues.
Yeah.
Peter, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I'd love to. I think that, I don't think anybody's got any doubt about any of the factual stuff that's been said. It's absolutely correct. There, the problems with, there are some problems with the other alternatives. There are a few private fixes that they could pursue on their own, which I think they did some, they did, I think, all of those. And kind of came to a point where it wasn't going to be timely. We do have a little bit of an issue where kind of some of our internal ways to deal with it, zoning board, the planning board is hearing tomorrow night. And we're thinking we'll make a recommendation or may make a recommendation to remove that mislocated building standard and replace it with a consent agreement standard because the mislocated building permit standard variance isn't legal. So, and we've been doing it for years. And the other towns that do it, for example, Falmouth, which uses our same, our same exact language, you know, developed in the 70s by the same lawyer probably that represented both of us, they have a second step of that process where the mislocated building permit approval, or the mislocated building variance by the zoning board then comes to the council for a consent agreement. So there is, like, we normally would have steered somebody to the zoning board. They wouldn't have made the time for that, when this came to our attention, for that meeting to answer that question. However, this would have probably been the last month or next month would be the last month where we expect that to be on the table without some major changes to it. So that's part one. The town attorney expressed the same exact concern that you did not, that this isn't legal. There's, there wasn't the concern that the council couldn't do this. The question is just that Amy expressed to us was her concern, just procedurally for the council, that you guys become the first stop. So she said, if the council wants to consider this, one tonight, which it sounds like there is appetite to do that, that she would like the council, recommend the council and staff to work with the council to put on a policy of how these things are going to get addressed. I think that needs to be done in conjunction with the mislocated building, whatever comes out of that from the planning board that the council has. And it does not need to be an ordinance. This can be like, this is our standard that we're going to vote on, majority rules, you know, you can change it at any time, but this is what we expect to be done. Do you expect the zoning board process to be exhausted first? Do you expect the, a formal letter from the neighbor saying they won't sell a piece of land? Do you expect documentation that people have been notified that this, that that, you know, all the things that we would expect before a consent agreement is issued for like a variance type of scenario? So you can do it. The concern that you express is completely, you know, justified. If you're going to do this, let's not set a precedent. Let's make sure that we, on the back end, address this and set a policy of how you deal with these in the future. So. And you might choose that this might be the way you want to do it in the future. That's a policy decision. But she recommended we have something in writing, but that that doesn't necessarily need to stop this consideration tonight from a legal perspective. There are a couple, when we get down to the language, there are a few suggestions, modifications that are very simple that she wanted me to convey after we finish this draft here. So I'll do that.
Is the first place for that policy discussion at the planning board meeting tomorrow night? They'll start discussing what maybe-
It's going to, it's going to depend on what they decide. Because if they, which we're thinking, we're going to recommend that that miss, that that variance option be taken out because by itself, it can't exist legally. Those cases usually get lost. So they do get lost all the time when they're granted and they're challenged. So the policy will be our kind of- So, the policy will be our kind of, you know, staff and council decision will be a council policy for how the council expects, um, these to come to you in the future.
Can, who's taking point on developing that policy, recommending that policy? Is that something you can borrow from another town and say this is how somebody else does it?
We'll see if anybody's, we'll see if anybody's got them. They must. If she's recommending that, there must be any standard.
Probably has some draft language on it. Council Lawrence?
I've heard up here a couple of times, not just tonight, but are we setting a precedence? I, I guess I don't understand what that is in this context, that we cannot, as a board, commit to the next board something that's already, that, that we've done. We can't, what is it called? Hinder the next board? So, where does that precedence come into, to play? Because in November, this board theoretically changes. So.
There's, there's no legal precedent. I think it's a fairness question of, um, you know, let's say the next person that has a ten-foot, uh, side setback issue, um, and the council says, now, we don't, we don't want to take it up, or maybe the neighbor's not in favor of it, or maybe there's different conditions. This one is pretty cut and dry. I don't think anyone's arguing about the facts, but I think the question is, is there a fairness claim? Nothing legally that's going to be, someone's going to be able to stand on, but does a resident expect, resident who's watching this tonight or a year from now watches the replay and says, and then finds out they have a ten-foot setback violation, are they going to get the same treatment? That's really what the concern is.
And I would expect that.
Yeah.
And in this case, there's an extenuating circumstance in that they're in the middle of a sale, which compresses the time down to thirty days. So far, we found we can't get anything done in thirty days. So, there's an extent, there's, there's that extenuating circumstance, which allows it to come to us first. So, that's all I want to point out.
Council Riley?
So we go through quite regularly this attempt to fill boards and commissions to do the will and the work that council has directed them to do, and now this item comes before us where it should technically go before the board of appeals, and it would have been handled in a timely manner, would have been handled last night rather than tonight. The delay that took place is a delay because things aren't, weren't perfect in the, in the conceived world and of something that was brought up. Again, it was a simple solution. The board of appeals would have handled it, um, and probably would have been in favor of what you, what you were asking for, but it comes back to, well, if we're going to start doing this, then we may as well just do all the other things that all these other boards and committees are doing because we're not allowing them to do their work. And that's my point. I don't, you know, I can vote in favor of this. What we need to do is know what those boards and committees do and direct people in the proper direction to, right off the bat, and let it go. And yes, if it means it, it has to be extended a week or two after the proposed closing date, those changes also get to take place. So, um, it's unfortunate that we have this before us. It doesn't mean that I won't vote in favor of it, but, uh, we don't need to see it again. We don't need to see other boards and committees being denied the process that we ask them to do and we support them to do.
Uh, I believe we have heard already why it, the issue is taking the route that it's taking, and I think we heard from the manager that even if on day one of notification, the homeowners would not have been able to get onto the agenda because of prior notification requirements to set that agenda. So, even if, uh, the applicant was given precisely the advice that you're recommending, I'm not sure they'd have been able to get onto that committee that met last evening.
It's unfortunate, but it's not, you know, the bank, the, the lending bank for the purchaser of the, uh, property is the one that's at issue, and they found something that they deemed in violation, so yes, that's an automatic delay. So it means that you do have to accept those delays going through. We just can't do that immediate change over.
Can I just, I just want, go ahead.
I was just saying, they can't get the survey they need to go to the appeals board for eight months.
No, no, I mean, this, this limited setback, or, or not limited setback reduction, a, uh, mislocated building appeal is a very simple process.
Well, we just heard Nick say that they need a specific boundary survey. They will not accept the Class D. Which they tried to do, and they called everybody, and it was eight months, right? Eight months before they get someone out there, so it's going to be an eight-month process. That's all I'm saying.
Robin and Alan, I apologize. You're, you're uncovering a, a much bigger issue than just your particular item, and so we're going to try and actually conclude our conversation. I think we've had everyone say what they need to say, um, and we'll go ahead and close, actually, we already closed the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and be ready to vote.
Can I make a comment, John?
Yeah.
So, the.
We didn't close the public hearing, okay.
So the, the town attorney, well, then, why don't you close the public hearing, and then I'll just present staff comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
So there were two recommendations if the council moves forward, which is what I'm, uh, I, I think is going to happen, but, um, the town attorney wanted to add some specific language, um, so I'll say this out loud, and then I'll give it to Sharon afterwards if the council decides to make, to, to make the motion to add this in, um, in, and I don't think this will, this will affect you guys at all, but if you.
What I'm saying is a problem, just jump up, please, and, uh, we just got this at like four-thirty in the afternoon, so if it's an issue, just jump up and we can talk about it, but I don't think it is.
Section four, after provided that no further setback violations occur, and section six, uh, provided, uh, or a future owner, uh, unless owner or future, no, never mind, uh, section four, provided that no further setback violations occur, to add the language after it, and provided that there is no expansion, extension, or enlargement of the existing structure within the setback area. The specific concern being that sometimes when a language is worded like this, forty feet is allowed, and then people square it off and, and think they can build the entire structure forty feet close. Only the portion that's currently in violation can remain in violation, so you can enlarge that section. You can build, the future owner could build off the side of the house in the other direction, can extend it, can expand it, all that stuff, but. So that, that language specifically to eliminate that, and she also requested that the mortgage loan, uh, survey be attached as a, to the recorded, as page one, two, three, four of the recorded document.
Would you be able to, um, get in touch with the applicants, uh, tomorrow in a timely manner with that language so that this can be edited? I don't know, did you have an attorney draft this, or did you draft this?
But you wouldn't have any issue, I'm assuming that you're, they're not, yeah, that's just within the area of the.
Just to define what we're, what we're consenting to this evening is defined as what the actual.
Is the, is the, the survey report, the mortgage loan survey report available? Okay, so we could append that to a, we could edit this up, and then John will sign the appended version.
So can we get that language from Amy to LaPointe's council tomorrow?
Well, I think you got to approve it tonight with, so, a motion.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah, a motion and a second, if the council wants, what I just said, and Sharon can get it in the record, and then, assuming that they're, we'll run it back and forth, assuming they're in agreement, so.
Conceptually, everybody okay with that amendment?
All right.
Need to vote on the amendment?
We need, we need to vote on the amendment, um, and so the amendment is to, um, in, in the proposed consent agreement under section four, at the final statement, provided that no further setback violations occur, comma.
And provided that there is no expansion, extension, or enlargement of the existing structure within the setback area, period.
Second.
Got that.
All right, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we have an amended consent agreement to vote on. Counselor Bradley, could you please read the be it ordered, and we'll take a vote?
Be it ordered, then request for an amended consent agreement from Robin LaPointe for property at eight Tumbler Hill Road, tax assessment map twenty-four, lot seventy-one B. For the purposes of allowing a dislocated, dislocated building that does not appear to meet the required setback, the underlying zoning district be allowed to remain.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'll get our attorney, uh, to send that specific language so this can be in there, and then Peter will let me know when it's available, and we'll get it signed.
We can email tomorrow. Thanks, folks.
All right. Our next item is item number one-four-seven dash two-one, to consider action relative to the redistricting, potential redistricting of Freeport Municipal Voting Districts. Uh, this is a public hearing. Counselor Daniele, could you please open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we had a presentation at our previous meeting back in, uh, July from our town clerk, Chris Wolf, uh, who showed us the demographics and the updated demographics between the last time we had a review of this and, and where we are today in 2021, uh, with a recommendation that we actually not redistrict, and maybe just for the public hearing, Chris, if you could reiterate, um, your rationale for that position.
Um, so when you look at the redistricting we did, I started in 2016 and finished in seventeen, uh, we were off a significant amount of voters in three of the districts. Um, the reason that I'm not recommending redistricting this year is because we're, we're off thirty or thirty-two. Um, we actually sent, in the two weeks since we set the public hearing, we've lost six voters, so we've lost voters from three of our districts. So that shows you kind of how fluid that number is. So with that rationale, seeing that we're off thirty in a couple districts, um, that number is not really that significant, and so my recommendation is for, um, the council to look at it again in 2024 after the presidential.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to address the council or ask questions of the clerk, this would be your time to come forward. Please introduce yourself at the podium.
I think.
All right, I don't see anyone moving forward. Last chance. It's nice to have a crowd here. Just want to make sure. Uh, Counselor Daniele, could you please, uh, move to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments from the council to the clerk? Counselor Daniele, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the town council determines whether to alter and change the boundaries of the Freeport.
Uh, nope, next one up.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, no, you were on the right one.
At least, it's just not worded. I think you have to pick what we want to do.
Yeah.
I guess I worded it so that you could direct me whether, yes, um, to do the redistricting or no, you're happy with the numbers as they are.
Jake, you can take a stab at it, probably.
Be it ordered that the town council determines not to edit the redistricting boundaries of the Freeport Voting Districts. Yeah, how's that? Don't you go any further?
Contain as dearly as possible.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Our next item is, uh, item number one-four-eight dash two-one. This is the action to officially commit the, uh, public dollars for the bridge work, which was approved at a bond election back in March, for, uh, lane improvements over the exit twenty and twenty-two bridge, uh, which is a MDOT, Main Department of Transportation project. We have a cost-share amount of approximately six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. Counselor, uh, Riley, could you please read, uh, sorry, make a motion to open the public hearing?
You said Bradley?
Riley.
Move to open the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the public hearing tonight is on the issuance of six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars in bonds, which were approved by the voters, uh, on March ninth, to finance a local share of the construction of bicycle and pedestrian pathways. Uh, we have a significant amount of, um, detail in the order, which I'm not going to make anyone read in particular, but, um, this is a public hearing about, uh, spending and actually committing the bond, which was approved, uh, by the public on March ninth. Anyone here wish to address the council or speak to this issue as part of the public hearing? Please introduce yourself at the podium. Okay. Uh, Counsel Riley, will take a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing on this item is closed. Uh, Peter, is there a, a brief explanation about what mechanically this segment is doing here?
We, our local authorization, uh, in the charter requires voter authorization for a bond of this amount. This is all the meat and potatoes that the SEC is going to want to see when they're reviewing, whether it's a tax-exempt bond and whether it meets all the standards for a financial instrument. So, these are all the legal details. This should be pro forma. There should be, there shouldn't be much discussion on this. This was prepared by our financial, uh, council, so.
And is that the same of the next item, number one-four-nine?
Uh, it's related. This, the next item is not required, uh, for the bond stuff. The only, this order, so our bond counsel, who's Greg from, uh, Drummond Woodson, Greg prepared this, which will make him able to sign off on the, you know, on all the, the documentation that says we're legal bond.
So can we, uh, for the public record here, can we reference what's printed in the agenda as a be it ordained, or do we have to read it into the record?
You can say, uh, as be it ordained, that, uh, as printed in the agenda, I think is, I think will suffice. It's been out there in the public. We've had a public hearing on it.
So, um, Counsel Riley, could you please just, um, make that motion?
Starting with the where I ask.
To, to be it ordained. Yeah, I'm not even sure we have to read that. I think that, uh, be it ordained that we are.
Yes.
Recommending.
Be it ordained that the twelve points outlined in the agenda of tonight's council meeting be accepted. Second.
Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's our vote for bond council, so they have, uh, the language to actually issue the bonds as, uh, approved by the council. Related, next item is item number one-four-nine dash two-one. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the, I'm sorry, let me just set it up. This is action relative to the proposed state municipal cost-sharing agreement, uh, with the MDOT. The six-hundred-and-thirty-four, six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars is our, Freeport's portion of the, I don't know, eighteen million dollar project or something, um, for the two bridge improvements at exit twenty and twenty-two. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the be it ordained and further ordained, and we'll take some questions after that?
Be it ordained that the proposed state municipal cost-sharing agreement with the Main Department of Transportation for the construction of multi-use paths at the exit twenty and twenty-two bridge projects in an amount up to six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars be approved. Be it further ordained that the town manager be authorized to execute the final agreement on behalf of the town to include any clerical non-substantive changes from the draft agreement approved by the town council.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. So this is the vehicle in which we actually, uh, contract with MDOT and, uh, obligate the funds that we talked about in our last item, um, uh, to go into the overall budget for the bridge. MDOT, just as a reminder, invited us, and we participated in a significant amount of, uh, design, uh, events and, uh, public, uh, charrettes for, uh, the improvements that are part of the final design now. We did that last year. And so this item that we're taking action on this evening is the way, the actual legal way for us to co-contract with MDOT to get the work done. Did I miss anything?
Nope, this is required by our charter. If it's over a hundred thousand dollars, a capital improvement, so we're holding, um, this isn't quite as important. No one's going to take us to SEC white-collar prison if we get this one wrong, so, um, this just, somebody might sue to overturn the expenditure of the funds if they were really opposed to the bridge project or something like that, so. Almost equally as bad.
Don't give them ideas.
They can't do it if you follow the correct procedure that we've outlined here, so, yeah. They're much less likely to succeed, how about that? If we follow the correct procedure.
It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of item number one-four-nine dash two-one?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Great, thank you. Uh, our next item is item number one-five-zero dash two-one. Uh, Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the item and make a motion to open the public hearing?
To consider action relative to proposed amendments to section thirty-two dash six-zero-one K of the Shellfish Commission Conservation Ordinance, public hearing, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded, open the public hearing. We'll have the public hearing first and then a little bit of conversation on the recommendation here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is open. This is a public hearing on proposed changes in the Shellfish Conservation Ordinance. If anyone's wishing to address the council on this particular item, this is the time to do it. Please introduce yourself when you step up to the podium. We finally hit the issues.
Hello, my name is Corey Wentworth, and I've been a commercial clamor for 22 years. My place of residence is being sold to take advantage of the housing market, and as of right now, I can't afford to buy a house in this town. I also cannot personally afford to lose my license, so I'm hoping that this change will go through so that we can have the opportunity to live outside of this town and keep a license that I depend upon for a living, so, thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming this evening. Anyone else wish to address the council on the recommended changes from Shellfish Conservation Commission?
I'm just going to answer any questions you guys have, so.
I'd just point out one other, oh, no, let the public go.
I'll get out.
Go ahead.
Been sitting long enough. I'm Sean Cream, and I'm a former resident of Freeport, but this is a public hearing, and I'm here to encourage you to approve this change in the ordinance. If you think about any of us who've had any kind of a career, right, that you've had for 20, 30 years, and then all of a sudden you find out that because circumstances have changed, you would have to go back into a lottery to see whether or not you could keep your job. And what this really does is it says, let's just make it fair for everybody that's, you know, participating. If you happen to be, live outside the town and you purchase a non-commercial license and you choose to move into the town, you shouldn't have to go back into a lottery to be able to keep your license, because then it's, then it's, you know, you're rolling the dice. I happen to be Corey's father as well, so I'll put that up there. And he got his license as part of a lottery when he was 16. I was pleased, it helped pay for his college. And as he's continued to work, and it's not just about him, there are several other shellfishers who have found themselves in very much the same situation. And right now, as many of you are aware, and we've also heard, you know, from folks who are selling properties, you know, here today, that the market in the town really has become a cash-driven market that they're in. And what this just does is kind of levels the playing field so that the folks who have a significant part of their livelihood will be able to not be diminished in being able to continue that because the ordinance would require them to go back into a lottery system. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. Anyone else wish to make comments? Please step forward.
Hello, Chris Graham, Freeport, former member of the Shellfish Commission. And I hesitate to speak because I just saw this on the agenda and just read it. But if any of you have questions, I certainly would hope you to go back and ask, what are the limits on this? If half of the clambers move out of town, do they all get to go now to, you know, non-residential licenses? But I'm sure, and I guess Charlie can actually answer this question, have they considered that and what that does to the numbers?
So the state mandates a minimum of 10%.
Charlie, could you please step up so we can have it on the public record? Thanks.
So the state mandates that we give out a minimum of 10% of our total license number to non-residents, so it can be higher, but it just can't drop below 10%.
So there could be an action where we can make a change to that regulation to allow a higher percentage?
Um, it's--
If there were, happened to be a, an exodus of resident shellfish license holders that were no longer residents?
You could, I don't know if you would need to, it just, you just cannot drop below that threshold of 10%.
Okay.
You can't restrict it in the other way. We can't say 100% of the shellfish licenses are reserved for Freeport residents. You have to offer at least 10% of them externally. So people moving out wouldn't be the problem. People moving in would be a problem if you didn't then put non-resident licenses back on the table the next year.
I see.
Correct? Like if you had all of your non-resident people move into town--
If all of a sudden you had every one of your non-residents choose to become a resident, I guess you would run into--
Yeah. Legally, we would have to offer that many, we'd have to offer 10% of non-resident licenses the next year.
Yep.
Counsel Bradley?
I wonder if Mr. Graham's question is if something like that were to happen, it would throw off the Shellfish management in the town?
Absolutely, that's what drives the number of licenses, et cetera, et cetera. So you now have changed your ratios, and I don't know how you restrict how many licenses you can have if you have that many.
Any consideration, please, I hope, just, yes, and this is fair to you and what you said to others, but, you know, at risk is our Shellfish management program if the licenses get out of whack, so that, let's posit your situation where all of a sudden all the non-residents, which are now 10% of our licenses, were to move into town. That's not going to happen, I understand, but if it were, then all of a sudden we have to add 10% more of the bigger number to our number of licenses to meet the state requirement. And then I guess the question is, does that throw off clam management because we now have so many licenses in town, taking, you have to deal with it some other way, and have we thought about how we would do that if that contingency were to occur?
Yeah, no, that's a great point. If you did have everyone move into town, you know, just like you said, you'd have to give out additional licenses, and that's not something that we've discussed as a committee yet. Like we said, the chances are pretty low that that would happen, but like you said, there's always that chance, yep.
Now, the other way around, there would be a natural address for that, which would be if 10%, if, let's say 10% of the residents moved out of town and became 20% non-resident and 80% resident, you could just not offer those 10% of the licenses, those five or six licenses, back up for lottery the next year.
Right, yep.
Because you're not required to.
Yep, yeah, our licenses are capped.
Yeah. The only way you're going to be in trouble is going in the other direction--
Correct, yep.
--if people net migration into town.
Back into Freeport, that's when you would run into the issue, yep.
We don't get in any trouble from a conservation point of view in this situation because it actually reduces the amount of licenses that we will have to issue.
It wouldn't reduce it, it'd be the same, same license number, you would just have a greater than 10% living outside of town now.
And a smaller number than you had the year before in the commercial, in the commercial license--
In the resident category, yep.
You won't be adding another commercial resident license because of this situation?
Nope, and how we have it now, I mean, you need to live in Freeport for 12 months before you can apply for that resident license if one does come up in lottery. So if folks, you know, live in Freeport for at least 12 months, they get their license through lottery, you know, kind of like Corey's situation, 22 years goes by, you know, the housing is the way it is, they would have the option to move out of town if they wanted to.
Or had to.
Or have to.
Counsel Riley?
What are our licenses capped at?
I believe we have 53 residents in total. I think we have 59 licenses, I believe.
And--
Nope, she's not here anymore, so.
What do we have for a demand?
I mean, when one goes up for lottery, we, it's, it's a lottery.
Right, so you've got a kind of waiting list.
It's not a waiting list, it's, it's whenever, you know, let's say someone passes away or gives up their license, you know, chooses another profession, doesn't want to clam anymore, that license will be reissued back into the lottery, and depending on what it is, if it's a resident or non-resident license that was given up.
Typically, how many, how many people apply if it's in a lottery situation?
Um--
Five, 10?
This year was, I think, for the resident, when it was 17 folks that put in.
Wow.
For the non-resident, when there's a non-resident available, that number is, I think we had 40 something the last time we had a non-resident license go out.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniele?
Was there any conversation about having a minimum time in Freeport before you can leave and keep your license?
Uh, there was. There was numbers that were thrown across the board, but at the end of the day, the commission kind of looked at, well, you already have to be established for 12 months before you even apply to be in the lottery for that license when it comes up. So they thought that 12 months, and you might not get, you know, of course, it's a lottery, so.
So for those 17, Charlie, you had a 1 in 17 odds, and each one of those 17 people had to be a resident for at least a year beforehand?
Correct, yep. And another, I don't know if you guys have the verbiage in front of you, but, you know, let's say Corey, for example, you know, right now he holds a resident license, let's say he wants to move out of town, it becomes a non-resident when he renews, but if he gives up his license, for whatever reason, it's reissued back as a resident license how it was originally issued out. So it wouldn't be reissued as a non-resident, be issued out as a resident. So you would just keep track how each license was originally distributed.
I think that's an important distinction. Thank you for clarifying that, Charlie.
So you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So in Corey's situation, he'll, he'll move out of town, he'll get a non-resident, we pass this, a non-resident license right away, and then the commercial resident license that he held will now go up for lottery next year as a resident license?
Nope, no, because it's that same number, we're capped at that same number, so the only way it would go out to lottery is if he completely gave it up, if he said, I don't want it anymore, but it would be reissued out as a resident.
Or turn 65.
Or turn 65 years old, yep.
And what is the difference in licensing fee?
Uh, double, so it's 200 and 400.
Take the money, we need it.
So, but an important point is that the, that number, that cap number, is annually debated by the Shellfish Commission.
Correct, yep.
So they can adjust that upwards, you can't adjust it downwards unless you have some, some licenses expiring.
Yep, we discuss it, one meeting every year is designated to license allocation.
Right, right, it's always a discussion. If, for example, the commission's like, hey, we need 10 more licenses, distribute a nine resident, one non-resident, they can do that in any given year, but that's with the approval of DMR, that's got to be--
Correct, yep. I mean, in this, this ordinance change would, you know, have to go to DMR as well, because they review all town shellfish ordinances and make sure everything's the way it should be, so just because it's approved here doesn't mean that, you know, they would necessarily prove it, they have to give the stamp on it as well.
We've had that happen here with the council, where things come back after they get edits from the commissioner's office, so, yeah.
So if I, after thinking about it for a moment, if I could just make a comment, it would be one, it seems like it would be a good idea to put some kind of sunset in there, because there's always a lot of contention between riparian owners and clambers, and just envisioning numerous clambers leaving town possibly for the same reason. You now have a number of outer towners, you know, trying to go along with all the riparians in town. Doesn't seem like the best idea, but I maybe, I have not followed this for a while, just my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other presidents wish to comment on this? Step forward.
Joyce Bay, you are a riparian owner. I am in favor of this change, and we have several young clambers that are residents and have ties generational to our mud flats here in Freeport. They're now getting married, I don't know, but yet they are. They would like to move out of their parents' house, and the reality is, they can't. They cannot afford to purchase a house in Freeport. We don't have a rental market, for whatever reason, and it's just not fair. I mean, if they move out because they want to buy a place, they end up losing their livelihood, and I don't think that's something that we should do to them. So this gives them the opportunity that many of us have had in our lives, and we've been able to move out of mom and dad's place and buy a house, and they need the same opportunity, so please vote yes.
Thanks, Joyce.
We're thinking about that zoning amendment, Joyce, for basement expansions for clam families only. That's the alternative, right?
I'll talk to mother.
Anyone else wish to step forward? Please do.
Apologize for running a little late, I honestly spaced it. I'm Jared Levers, second generation shellfish harvester here in Freeport. I'm on the Shellfish Committee as well. I don't necessarily live in my parents' basement, but I, I don't quite own my own house yet. I'm very close to being in the market of buying a place, and it's tough, you know? 20 years ago, putting me in this, you know, this age bracket and this situation, probably would have been able to swing it, but boy, times have changed. I mean, we all have seen that, and this is just a way that, I think it's, it's kind of like adapting, you know what I mean? I just, maybe I'd be able to swing it, but I don't, it'd be difficult to buy a place here in Freeport nowadays with, there's a lot of competition out there, and they're not, they're not making any more land, you know? That's, it is what it is, so I don't really see any downfall as far as allowing us to move out of town. I mean, you allow that to happen, I'm not envisioning a bunch of places that go vacant, that's for sure, because the clambers aren't living in Freeport anymore. To go with what Chris was saying, if I become a non-resident and I'm down there, I'm still going to get along with the landowners just as, just as I was when I was living here in Freeport, so. Yeah, if anything, they're going to get a little more money out of us annually. And the way, the way that we decided to do it, as far as what Charlie was explaining, you know, say, I move out of town, I start paying the non-residential fee, for whatever reason, I either give my license up, big career change, or I turn 65 and it gets reissued, it's going to be issued as a residential license like it originally was. Therefore, you know, I know people that have lived in this town for a long time that have been trying to get a license, that doesn't deplete their chances, you know? They get the same chance as they would even if we all split and leave out of town, so. Does anybody have any questions, I guess, before I sit back down? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, anyone else? Public hearing? Counsel Lawrence, I think we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Yeah. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for enlightening us on that, and thanks to the Shellfish Commission for coming forward with this important language change so that we can take action on it. Chip, could you please read the be it ordained so we can take a vote?
Be it ordained that the proposed amendments to Section 32-601K of the Shellfish Conservation Ordinance be enacted.
Second.
Any further conversation? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, Sean. Thank you all. Our next item is item number 151-21, to consider action relative to proposed amendments to Chapter 2 of our Administrative Code, Section 509, the inspections Division of the Freeport Town Ordinances. We are opening a public hearing. I'll just note that the next four, including this one, this item and the next three are administrative updates. We are required to have a public hearing to make amendments and update these. They tend to all relatively sort of clump together, although they are for individual specific activities and governance issues, so we will take them individually. But keep in mind, if you're here to participate in the public hearing, the, we're not going to hold, like, you can only talk about electrical on electrical or plumbing on the plumbing, so if you're moved to say something, please feel free, even if we have moved on from that particular item. Okay. Counselor Whitney, could you please make a motion to open the public hearing?
I motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have a public hearing on administrative, Chapter 2 Code, or Administrative Code, Section 509, inspections divisions, division of the Freeport Town Ordinance. We have our code enforcement officer, Nick Adams, here. Nick, could you explain a little bit? We had some preface on this at our last meeting, but for the public meeting, for the public hearing, could you just explain what we're accomplishing with this amendment?
Sure, for this amendment in Section 509, dating back to 2010, when the main legislature adopted what's called the main reform of building and energy code, which basically is adopted by the MUBEC Board, call it, they actually update the building and energy code and ventilation standards every three to six years. But what happened about, I think it was two years ago, the legislature made another change that actually added that the MUBEC Board had to adopt the newest energy-- had to adopt the newest energy code, and that they had to adopt the International Mechanical Code, and then switched the ASHRAE ventilation standards and the Radon standard to now make them a code. So prior to that, what that means is, you have a code that says, "This is what you have to do." A standard is, you only have to do the standard if the code requires you to do it. So this is a requirement by state law where basically we have to do it. So I would just make the amendment to update those, which is the 2015 International Mechanical Code, 2015 Energy Conservation Code. And it updates three ASHRAE standards from the 2013 to 2016, and the Radon stays the same year.
Nick, is it fair to characterize that these amendments and improvements are resulting in healthier buildings because of improved and more finite standards?
I mean, they are, the buildings are going to get a lot tighter now. So now there's requirements to seal the building up really tight, and then you're going to have to have ventilation and other things like that. I'm not, wouldn't say that 100% they're healthier buildings. I don't know if I go down that. But the energy code does try to seal up the house, so you could try to save energy costs over time. And, but there is an added expense to both the energy and the ventilation standard.
Okay. Nick, are these retroactive?
Technically, July 1st, they were required to meet them.
But do they apply to existing buildings?
Oh, there's an existing building code that's currently in the ordinance. That is not changing at all. It's the same 2015. But that usually only attempts if you actually go to do any changes to your existing building. It doesn't retroactively say if your single-family home didn't have a thirty-six-inch rail, now you got to do it. That is, that's a life safety code. But the life safety code itself, we adopt out anything for one and two families. It's just retroactive for commercial properties, which is the same state law.
Thanks, Nick. Any other members of the public wish to comment, testify in a public All right. Counselor Whitney, I think we'll take a motion.
I take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Read the be it ordained.
Be it ordained that the proposed amendments to Chapter Two, Section 509, inspections Division of the Town of Freeport Ordinances be enacted.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. Our next item is item number one-five-two-dash-two-one, to consider action relative to proposed amendments to Chapter Thirteen of the Fire Prevention Code of the Freeport Town Ordinances. This is a public hearing. Counselor Bradley, could you please make a motion to open?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nick?
This one's a little different than MUBEC, the building code, because we're not preempted to do this. But we've always had a fire prevention ordinance for dating back to, I think, the seventies. All this does is, the main state Fire Marshal's Office, which basically adopts several NFPA standards and codes and also rights rulemaking, we're just updating our ordinance to be consistent with what the state law says. So if you apply for any construction permits or anything like that through the Fire Marshal's Office, or if they do any investigations or anything like that, people are required to meet that. So our ordinance is just reflecting that. It updates the fire code, NFPA one, from the 2006, 2018, the life safety code from the 2009 to the 2018. And I think the only other one is the fire alarm code from the twenty, 2007 to 2019.
So the amendments that we're making are just to align with what is already in place on the state?
Yeah. So when people come in for a building permit now, the building plans might say the 2006 code, but then when they go to the Fire Marshal, they have to meet the 2018 code. So there's an inconsistency between the two. The eighteen code is up to date more often than the six and the nine.
That's an important distinction, I think, that we're aligning with the state Fire Marshal Office. Counselor Bradley?
Your button. I'm sorry, thanks. This is not required of us. This is for consistencies, purposes.
Correct.
Are there times when someone would not need both? They would just need one?
They still apply statewide. You might not need a permit from the, so a construction permit is anytime you have like an assembly building, or you have a mercantile or business use over 3,000 square feet, or a multi-level building. That's when you get the permit. Now, if something happens in the building or something else like that, the Fire Marshal can investigate and they, you know, could go after the architect or somebody else if they didn't meet the state standard that's required by state law that the buildings meet.
Those kinds of structures.
For commercial buildings, all, all commercial.
This will apply to all structures in town when we do it as an ordinance?
Except for one and two families. We exclude that out in our ordinances for one and two families, just so you're aware.
All multifamily, all commercial, all places of assembly.
I'm sorry, Peter, I couldn't hear that.
All multifamily, all commercial, and all places of assembly, correct? Like public?
Yeah, basically industrial uses, storage occupancies, things like that. Yep. Daycares, things like that, yep.
So, but that's what you're saying is that even though this, you don't need to apply for a permit from the Fire Marshal's Office, you're still legally required to meet that code. And if something goes wrong, you're liable if you didn't build to the correct code. Ten years from now, you're supposed to do what's in here. You could be cited or found liable if there's a death or something like that.
Yeah. More times often than not, so the MUBEC Board that I was talking about earlier, they actually find the inconsistencies between the building codes and the fire standards because it's written by two different bodies. And they're supposed to be looking at the two of them. And nine times out of ten, the building code is actually more strict than the fire codes.
Counsel Riley?
This is, you reviewed it with Chief Jordan?
Yes.
And he approves?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else from the public wish to testify? All right. Counsel Bradley, can we close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Be it ordained?
Be it ordained on item number one-five-two-dash-two-one.
Be it ordained that the proposed amendments to Chapter Thirteen Fire Prevention Code be enacted.
Second.
Any other questions before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, Sharon. Thank you. Don't go far, Nick. Our next item is a public hearing, item number one-five-three-dash-two-one, to consider action relative to proposed amendments to Chapter Seventeen of the Electrical Code Ordinance of our Freeport Town Ordinance. And this, we need to open a public hearing. Counselor Daniele?
I move to open a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is open. Nick, quick brief on the Electrical Code Amendments?
All right. The Electrical Code has been adopted by the Main Electrical Examinations Board on July 2nd, I believe it was. So it's just changing from the 2017 to the 2020 National Electric Code.
And so the amendment we're making to our town ordinance is to align with that?
With that. The licensee, the master electrician, journeyman, whatever they are, they are required to meet the 2020 right now, no matter what. This just puts our ordinance in consistency with the Electrical Examinations Board. And there's several amendments that go into there that we didn't, that the state didn't adopt that we put into our ordinance as well.
Anyone wish to testify? Come forward. Talk about the Electrical Code Amendments. It's hot stuff here. Juicy.
Sparky. Sparking.
All right. Counselor Daniele will...
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the be it ordained?
Be it ordained that a proposed amendments to Chapter Seventeen Electrical Code Ordinance be enacted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. All right. Moving right along. This is not a public hearing. Thank you, Nick. Thanks, Nick. Item number one-five-four-dash-two-one, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing for a new special amusement permit for Mass Landing Brewing. Counselor Riley, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for September 7th, 2021, at town council meeting that starts at 6:30 PM at Freeport Town Hall, 30 Main Street, to discuss a new special amusement permit for Mass Landing Brewing Company, 200 lower Mass Landing Freeport. And be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library, for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and notice be placed on Freeport's local Channel Three and the town's website.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. So we're not actually having any action on this. This is to set the public hearing for new business in town. I've been there a couple of times. They've done a really nice job with resetting the use of that building that they're in. So kudos to them. So we'll set the public hearing for granting a special amusement purpose, which allows them to have events in a location that serves alcohol. That's the threshold for special amusement permit. Any questions about setting the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Public hearing is set for September 7th. Our next item is item number one-five-five-dash-two-one, to consider action relative to a planning board consideration of land use regulations related to cannabis cultivation and cannabis manufacturing processing. We had a discussion about this at our last meeting, and the move was to, whether or not the council would make a recommendation for the planning board to take up the potential amendments to a land use ordinance to allow cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. Today, our land use ordinance is silent on this entirely. And we have two businesses that have been operating in our community as permitted by the state and not allowed to be regulated as the town for medicinal use, growing of cannabis. Those businesses have been operating. There have been zero complaints against either one of those. And with the changes in the state laws, we heard from the Office of Marijuana Policy, representative who was here several months ago, there's less and less distinction in the marketplace with the expansion of adult use of this particular product and the medicinal use of this particular product. And so the request from the business owners is to have the land use ordinance in Freeport technically allow them to continue to operate as an operating business in our community, which they've been here for numerous years. And I should know the amount because they've told me, but I can't remember. But it's more than a handful. So the discussion that we had at our last meeting, which is producing this action item this evening, is whether or not, as a council, we are going to recommend, simply recommend to the planning board to take up the issue of where cannabis cultivation and manufacture may or may not happen in our community, and suggest those changes to our land use ordinance. The planning board would very likely, if not be required, to have a series of public hearings about those recommended changes, assuming they come to some kind of a conclusion for a specific amendment. That amendment would then come back here to the council for what is very likely going to be another public hearing before those changes would be adopted. So we're not voting tonight on whether or not to allow cannabis up or down. We are voting tonight whether we're going to make a recommendation to the planning board to consider it.
May I?
Please.
So in two respects, John, I found your explanation of what we're doing a little different than what my understanding was. So my understanding is that these two businesses now have legal authority to grow cannabis for medicinal purposes only, and that in order to expand into the recreational market, they need us to opt in to the system. And that was missing from your explanation. So we really are being asked to expand the use, to allow the current cultivation sites to expand into recreational use. And last meeting, we did get very close to a decision not to do that by having three of us decide that we didn't want to refer this to the planning board because we didn't want to see recreational cultivation in our town. So when I saw this come up, I assumed that that was the purpose of it. It was now to have, I guess, a reconsideration because it was a three-three tie.
Correct.
And you're going, and the purpose of that was to decide not, whether in or not we were going to opt in to the recreational cultivation, which would in essence decide the issue of recreational cultivation in this town if we decided not to refer to the planning board. If I'm wrong in that regard, then I misunderstand what we're about. But I do view this vote, we had one, we have one counselor here tonight who wasn't here last time, unless people have changed their views, knowing what he thinks would determine this. And you could simply ask him, I think. But that's not, maybe not how you want to go. But it's, there's a three-three tie. Three of us don't want to refer this to the planning board because we don't want to see recreational cannabis in our town cultivated. And three decided that they did for different reasons. And now that's back on the agenda. Am I wrong?
You are precisely correct, Counsel Bradley. And because we have seven members, and we did have an indication of whether or not this should continue to go forward, and so we're going to have a vote this evening of all seven of us about whether it goes forward.
All right, Peter, but I took your...
The technical opt-in, let me just finish. The technical opt-in does not happen until we actually adopt an ordinance change. The planning board simply makes a recommendation. So that is likely at least two months, several months, several weeks at least, more than six, down the road before we would make an official action to opt in.
If we send it to the planning board. But if we descend, not decide, tonight, not descend it to the planning board, we cut that process at its ankles tonight.
That is correct.
Okay. And that was what I thought was missing from your explanation and why I raised the point that I do think we're making a determinative vote tonight, depending on what the seventh counselor decides.
Any other questions or comments? Jake?
Can the planning board take this up without our vote? Could they just decide to do this?
They could. I don't know exactly how you get onto their agenda if you make a recommendation to their chair or go through the planning department staff. So there's a few different ways you could, a resident could petition the planning board. There's, I want to say, $300 fee associated with that, or something like that. You can step up to the mic. You're going to have some questions here, Caroline, pretty soon. So there's a fee associated with that, but you can submit a petition. However, it doesn't, you can put all the zoning amendments in place that you want. They still have to come to you. So I think if there's not an opt-in vote, if there's not a majority of the council that's in favor of considering it, I don't think the planning board will take any time to consider. Even if a resident approaches them, I think they'll say, "Hey, there's not going to be support at the, at the council level." With the current council, at least, they voted, you know, four-three, or five-two, or, you know, seven oh, not to consider this. So I don't think they would take their own time. I don't know if you formally discussed that with them, though, Caroline?
No, we, the planning board hasn't discussed marijuana. They, I mean, I think everybody knows the council's been talking about it. We get a lot of questions. You know, their work plan would come from things identified with the comp plan, applicant-driven agenda items directed by the council. They have such a heavy workload in front of them right now and a huge backlog that this isn't something I would see them taking up on their own, especially where it's not identified as a goal of our current comprehensive plan.
Unless the council directs them to do.
Yeah, unless the council directs them to. If, even if the council directed them tonight, to be realistic, they're working real hard to get the shoreline zoning updated. It's been a huge priority that was bumped due to the pandemic and solar. That's next month, this month, they're working on some Board of Appeals stuff to be compliant with state law. So they're working on a series of cleanup. We would have to get staff up to speed with whatever the council wants to do. So realistically, I wouldn't see this on their agenda before early winter, November, December.
Counsel Riley?
And our other option, what does it take for this to be put before the voters? So that the question of opting in and opting out on the various different criteria that the Office of Marijuana Policy has in manufacture, growth, and testing, and retail operations?
So the only way legally for that to occur, a binding referendum. The council can put any non-binding question on an election warrant that you would like to get feedback. However, it doesn't do anything other than the vote you're about to take right now. You still, it still has to come back to the council to make the ultimate decision. You just have an advisory, you know, couple thousand votes to tell you, to inform you. It's like polling. There is a binding way that that can happen. The charter has a provision for a citizen initiative ordinance, which is somebody writes an ordinance, they come to you and they say, "Oh, with 10% of the registered voters from the last gubernatorial election," they present to you something that says, "Town council, the 10% of us, you know, of the 6,000, so 600 of us, or 800 of us, or whatever, want you to consider this ordinance." The council can say yea or nay. And if you say nay, if you don't adopt it as written or with small changes, it then goes to the voters. So if the residents go out, mobilize, get that many votes, if there's that many people that want you to consider it, it still comes to you anyways to make a decision. And then only if you say no, it goes to the voters. Yeah. So the voters have the ultimate say if you don't want to do it. But you get the chance to kind of short-circuit that election.
We start off with a petition. We start off with a petition that would have to be 10% of our registered voters.
Yes.
Number one, and then following the other steps going through.
Then it comes to you, then it goes to the voters if you say no.
Thank you.
That is the process that the single-use plastic bag ban went through in order to be enacted.
That was the last, that was the only time that I'm aware of that it's been used, I think, in its existence.
Six, five, six years ago.
At least in the past 10 years.
I know we have a number of members of the public, just for show of hands, people here to talk about this issue would like to comment? Okay, so we have a few. We're not having a public hearing this evening, but I feel like people are here for this evening for this particular matter, so we can listen, please be mindful, try and keep your comments to about three minutes for everyone else's time, but we're interested in getting input.
As councillor Riley just pointed out, to-
To inform us about our decision and our pathway going forward, so. We'd like to have members of the public who wish to address us on this issue, please come forward, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Carol Grimm, and I'm a 1,201 Facebook user for the town of Freeport tonight. So I'm excited actually to hear about this because I think it's a great way, I had no idea this ordinance was even coming up, I found out through a friend, and there's got to be a better way.
It's not an ordinance, ma'am.
Or not an ordinance, but issue, issue, thank you. So I think having this Facebook connection would be really good. I didn't know there was a newsletter, so having some of these topics out to the community, I think is really important, and there's got to be a better way, and it sounds like Peter's gonna, it's like, Peter? Yeah, he's gonna do it, make it happen. One of Town Council goals for 2021 is as follows, "Council will lead the process of re-envisioning the image and brand of Freeport to an inclusive, diverse, age-friendly community highlighting outdoor adventures, experiences, and the arts," which you all should know because you created this. I really think it's a great, great goal, and I fully support it. Approving an ordinance, I know it's not an ordinance issue, strays far from that goal, to allow recreational marijuana farms, as well, it degrades the image, the brand, and the quality of Freeport. I really highly oppose it. The town of Freeport shouldn't be spending time and resources opening up recreational farming, but rather putting effort into other industries, into their 2021 goal, creating outdoor adventures, as it says, experiences, and expanding the arts and culture. There is no doubt staying on course with this goal will enhance the value, image, and success of our community and town. And then Cap Wallingford also emailed the board today, and I just really support what she's saying, and one of the comments was, she's highly opposed to changing the town ordinance in regards to growing marijuana in the town of Freeport. Legal does not mean it's acceptable to do in our town. She also stated, can you imagine the smell of marijuana farms, which I'm not sure if that's what happened or not? There are so many things that are changed to make our town better. Opening up, growing, selling marijuana will be next, then tattoo places, casinos, strip joints, you name it. Anyway, her point was, it's a gateway ordinance change, and no to pot farms. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your-
Anyone else wish to make a comment on this issue? I saw a few hands go up, so.
Hi there, Jay Yomaz, I'm a resident of Freeport, and I just wanted to support the comments that Carol had made, just about the vision of what we, we think the town is, and what, augmenting what, is it an ordinance, councillor Egan, that, that we have, or what would you call it, a zoning ordinance, or?
Well, we don't have any ordinance yet.
Just allow, we just expand the permitted uses or something?
The idea is to take the, the issue of whether or not we create an ordinance to allow the businesses that are already here and functioning to continue.
Okay.
And so the, the recommendation would be to the planning board to come up with language that would then regulate and define where, and how many, and how big, and all of the usual things a land use ordinance does.
And if we, if we decide not to do that, they would just be limited to doing the medicinal production, is that correct?
Right, and with the changes in the marketplace, since it is legal for recreational or adult use is what it's called, that, that distinction is very likely to go away, and those businesses, without any language in our land use ordinance, would no longer be able to function in the community.
Hmm. So, hmm, that presents a problem for them, and I have respect for people that are trying to operate a business, I want to fully say that, it just happens to not be something that I believe fits the vision of what our town stands for and is trying to do, and again, I echo what Carol said, and I think what a lot of families and property owners and, and business owners in Freeport would, would like to see is, is not, not, not a change like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andrew Rossnell, thanks for opening this up so we can make comment. I'm not opposed to medical marijuana at all, but I am opposed to expanding this to the growth of recreational marijuana. I know they're not asking for stores. I have an issue with the expansion. I don't know the, Mr. Egan says that possibly they will fail as businesses if they don't get this, their sale market, their market will be diminished, I don't know that, I don't know how you gauge that. So I think we should stay where we are right now. I think Freeport's got a good vision going, I think we're working on it, we spent $100,000 earlier this evening to promote Freeport. I'd also like to, you know, I remember years ago, we would go and discuss home occupation, and Mr. Riley was there that night, and I said, geez, you know, if a fellow's got a barn, why can't you grow a boat in it? Why, why can't you build a boat in the barn? You know, we were only allowed 600 square feet. Mr. Riley looked at me and said, if you don't like the rules here, move to Brunswick. And I didn't, but, you know, so when other people went and asked for a zone change for their home occupation, for their small businesses, whatever it was, they were basically told, these are the rules, these are the rules. I know, you know, that, I came early and asked for zone changes, I think we ought to, if we're gonna have zone changes to promote businesses, it ought to be the ones downtown. You know, we need to work on these downtown businesses, these are the guys that have been here for years and years, Wilbur's Candy, places like that, I heard they had a hard time getting verbiage on the front of their awning. You know, what's going on with this stuff? You know, so we're gonna bypass them and change the zoning so these guys can grow more weed. And like I say, I'm not opposed to medical marijuana, if you can get something out of that stuff and make pain go away, and I know people that have used it, I think it's a wonderful thing. The other issue I have is, when we move into recreational marijuana, if I go out and drink too many beers and I get pulled over, they can tell how drunk I am. If I go out and smoke too much marijuana and they pull me over, how do they tell how stoned I am, or how impaired I am? There is no way to tell. So who's gonna take the liability? Where's this go? Now, someday, the federal government will make this legal, right now it's still a federally prohibited product, so it's a substance, it's, and they're talking about changing the categorization, categorizing this differently, so it's not a, as serious an issue, but it's still an issue, and it's still a federally prohibited product, and you've all taken an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the State of Maine, and the Charter of Freeport. And it's in conflict here somehow, and I think you should lean towards the better half. So, thank you for hearing us.
Thanks, Andy.
Can you hear me, Ed? Okay. My name's Mark Winter, and live at 2 Dixon Road in South Freeport, and I just want to comment on a couple things here, I want to associate myself with a lot of the comments that were previously made. One of the big, well, before I get going into this, I, that's sort of a procedural question, and I think it may have been answered, but, you know, looking at the language of the proposed language that you had in the agenda, I, I was unclear as to what it even meant, because looking, as, as councillor Bradley said, you know, looking at the minutes from last month, this was supposed to be a conversation, an opt-in, opt-out, everything like that, and the proposed language in the agenda really doesn't seem to change anything. It allows what is already allowed, and it doesn't clarify whether we're talking medical or recreational. So I think whatever direction, if the council decides to give direction to the planning board to take this under consideration, they need to be a little clearer on what they're asking the planning board to do, because it's, otherwise, if you're just gonna present them with this language, you're not really asking them to do anything other than do your job, and we want you to put this at the top of your list. And if, maybe that's all you want to do, I don't know, so that was a little unclear to me. But getting into the substance, substantive portions of this, I, you know, I'm following up on what Andy said, it is against, it's, it's not federally legal, we'll just start there, I think everybody knows that, I've been before this council before and talked about that, it's not federally legal. But that has implications and consequences. As a result of being quote-unquote illegal drug money, if you will, for lack of a better term, that, those funds are not allowed into the banking system. So this is a cash business that operates outside of the federal banking system, which causes both real and perceived issues. You know, I would ask a rhetorical question, what do you think is more susceptible to criminal activity? A purely cash business, or a traditional business that operates within traditional financing areas? Also, I know there's been arguments, and I, I'm sympathetic to the arguments of pushing businesses away from Freeport, but I think if something like this were adopted and those businesses stayed, you would be pushing other businesses away. There would be many business owners who would not want to be associated with either being in business next to, or nearby, what is arguably an illegal business. Also, I think the fact that it is quote-unquote legal under the laws of Maine can still change with the whim of an administration, both at the presidential level and at the governor's level. Yes, we've passed a law within the state, and part of that is, we're not going to enforce federal law. But a new governor could say, you know what, I'm not going to enforce state law, but I am going to allow Maine law enforcement to act with federal law enforcement to enforce these laws. So until the federal government figures out what they want to do with this, it seems like there's so many other things that this Freeport Town Council could be dealing with. I mean, it's 9:30 at night, and we've talked about shellfish, and we've talked about zoning, and we've talked about this, why is the Freeport Town Council even dealing with this? It should be open and shut, it's not legal. And until the federal government says it is, Freeport should be staying away from it, because it's just too many issues that are being brought forward that I think we don't need to deal with right now, we've got far better things to deal with as a town and as a community. So, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thanks for coming, Mark.
Joyce Fay, District 2, ditto.
Still Chris Grimm, Freeport. Going last, or almost last, you know, they made most of the points I was gonna make. But what really got me to come down here tonight about this was, I read in the Times Record, an article, hopefully it was mostly right, they don't always get it right. But it sat there and said, oh, you know, they may leave, they may go under, so we have to change something. And that really made me think about Washington, which I would bet most of us agree, is kind of broken. And it's broken because of the lobbyists and the corporate interests. Then you go to the state level, I look at our governor who vetoed the legislature with the CMP corridors, saying, no, no, they don't know what they're talking about, we don't need to listen to the people, for economic reasons again. So now we come down to the local level, and last time this came up, if I recall, there were half a dozen or a dozen people who all spoke, who all had ties, economic ties, to this project. And some of them, a number of them were not from Freeport. So this is supposed to be something that, governance is, is by the people, it's not by purely economic interests. And that's what trying to do this does, it takes away from the other priorities of the planning board, as he said. There, there are plenty of other things, we just spent $100,000 to go, let's make Freeport tourist-friendly, basically. So it's really up to the people, it should not be based on an economic incentive. It's a small, you know, if it's for Bath Iron Works, Oil Bean, slightly different case. Furthermore, no, they may not make it as a medical dispensary, or a medical, growing medical marijuana. If you look at the national pot farms, for lack of a better word, in the recreational markets, they're not making it either. Because unfortunately, yeah, anybody who wants to can grow half a dozen plants, according to state law. And that's not taxed, and it's a lot cheaper. So it's kind of a loser's progression, let's, well, this didn't work, well, we'll let them try this, well, maybe we'll let them try that, and I'd hate to see us go down that road. So whoever it is, I, I can't recall who it is who's the swing vote here, please don't send this on, just let it die, or at least go out and solicit the broader opinion of Freeport, because there are 8,000, there are 10 of us here, 12 of us, that's not a very large sampling, I'm sure you've gotten emails. So, thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for having this conversation tonight, my name's Peter Ingram, I'm one of the licensed medical caregivers that we're, that we're talking about, and, and I am hoping that the, that the vote is to advance a discussion with, with ordinance. I would, I wasn't preparing to say anything, except I would, I would like to respond to a few of the things that I heard. One of the main things I heard is that cannabis is not the image that Freeport wants to have, and I can respect that, I think that the work that, that Tony presented earlier was fabulous, like what we're doing downtown here in Freeport, it's, it's great for, great for the image of, of the community, it's, it's functional. But, but, and I've heard from multiple folks that the vision is not a vision of cannabis. And, and I would just like to, to express that, I feel like we're pretty invisible, and that we would continue to be pretty invisible. We're not opting, we're not asking to, to change any, you know, we're not scaling up, we're not, we're not expanding our footprint, that's not what we're asking to do, we're just asking to take some of the plants that we're growing and, and supply our, our adult use store as well, not in Freeport, our stores in other towns. To, to address the banking concerns, I pay my, my employees good salaries through payroll service, they get checks, I deposit my, my money when I do receive cash in my bank. We have, we have credit unions that handle our, our funds, so banking is not a, a security issue for us. Just like any other store, we accept debit cards and we have an ATM. Order is easily mitigated, we've never had an order complaint from our neighbors who are close by, one of which I talked today to and said that he would totally, be no problem if, if we changed, I changed, that's Charlie Smith, my back, my back neighbor there. The, let's see, some of the other notes, notes I've got here, the people of Freeport actually have weighed in when they voted to, to allow recreational cannabis in 2016. And nationally now, 60% of Americans are in favor of, of decriminalizing and allowing legal adult-use cannabis. I, I do think that safety and security is a big issue that we haven't talked about tonight. Cannabis is happening in Freeport, whether you move this forward or not. I'm one of two commercial growers that have been licensed here, there are probably 20 or 30 caregivers that are licensed with the state that aren't registered with the, the town of Freeport, that are producing cannabis now in Freeport. There's over 3,000 caregivers that can each produce, you know, 30 plants per, you know, per their grow. And the medical market that they're operating in is highly unregulated, there's no testing requirements, so there can be contaminated- There's no testing requirements, so there can be contaminated products. There can be pesticides that are getting washed into our water source here in, in Freeport. I would much rather see a highly regulated system like the adult-use program that prohibits those sorts of things and tests for them so that they can't end up in our ecosystems, in our consumers. It's also more highly regulated with our seed-to-sale tracking in the adult use. So diversion into the black market is much less likely. You have to count for every gram, every single step of the way, from seed to veg to bloom to, to the end consumer. In medical, there's, there's no tracking that's, that's implemented. So the existing system, whether we do anything or not, is, it's, there's faults to it. I would, I would be a proponent for the safety and security of our community, our environment, our kids to, to, to move towards the adult use and try to support that robust regulation. And in terms of federal decriminalization, we all saw that Chuck Schumer, he put forth the Cannabis Administration and Opportunity Act, which calls for decriminalization, it might happen this year, and for, you know, social reparations that are much needed because of the war on drugs and the stigmas that are still associated with it that are, you know, from that propaganda machine. Thank you. Sorry.
I'll go.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, Peter. Counsel O'Reilly.
What towns abutting in Freeport can you grow in?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't know.
Okay. But you would have the opportunity to move your operation.
There are others. The operation, I put so much infrastructure into the building.
Right.
It's not something that I, I, you know, I paid my way through college, rake and blueberries. I don't have the, the deep pockets that a lot of, that a lot of people might, but I can't just pick up and, and leave.
But you also have an adult-use retail store?
I have, I have two stores. I have an adult-use store and a medical store, both in South Portland.
Right. Okay. And so in comparison, the adult-use and the medical store, what are you seeing in traffic?
I'm seeing my average daily sales from, from January in my medical store gone down probably about 25% since January. And because other stores are opening up, but my adult-use store is, is showing a similar increase in sales. Yep. And we have a lot of our customers that are no longer getting their medical cards and just transitioning because it's easier.
You pay property taxes?
Here? And, yep, here I do.
Okay. In the town of Freeport, strictly for the property, what are, what are the fees you pay to the town of Freeport?
Well, that's a good question. Right now, there aren't really any fees for our license, for our licensure. Other communities like Portland are charging licensing fees. I think they're charging $10,000 in, in, in Portland, per year, per cannabis company. I know in South Portland, for my stores, I'm required to pay $2,500 per license, per year.
And that, here in, that really doesn't mean any much, much to us in a budget of $11,000.
Understand.
How condensed of a neighborhood are you growing in?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Where your grow operation is, how condensed of an operation? How many houses around you?
I've got one neighbor that I share a driveway with, and another neighbor right behind me. You know, the neighbor to the side of me is probably, maybe, maybe within 100 feet. And the neighbor behind is probably 1,000 feet, 500, 1,000 feet.
And no complaints?
Oh, no. No, we get along, we got along well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Peter. So we have a, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be brief. So I'm Hillary Lister, and I work with the two caregivers who are interested in if the town would up, at least consider this ordinance. I just wanted to address a couple of issues that were raised. One was odor. A lot of the regulations for adult-use businesses are far stricter than medical marijuana. There are no state regulations around odor from medical cannabis cultivation facilities. However, for adult use, the facility cannot have any detectable odor beyond the property line. There's also significantly stronger protections and requirements for showing no impact on the local water supply, wastewater protections, security protections, advertising restrictions. And in terms of banking, as was addressed, banking is available with U.S. Treasury guidance. However, the facilities that do have accounts from cannabis businesses are required to do due diligence to make sure that the businesses are in compliance with all state regulations. So businesses like this are subject to much more serious oversight than the average business at all. And adult use would be subject to more oversight and security and tracking than medical is currently. So the only changes, if this ordinance was adopted for these facilities, would be that they would be subject to stricter security and reporting requirements. But they would not be allowed to do anything that they're not currently doing other than sell to an additional market. And, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, questions? Hang on, Hillary. Counselor Daniele.
This is for either you or Peter. Are you allowed to sell across state lines to other places where medical marijuana is allowed?
There's no allowed sale across state lines. And that's one of the federal priorities for states that do allow cannabis sales, is that they make sure to prevent any sort of distribution across state lines.
Counsel O'Reilly.
Do either of you know, are there retail operations or medical operations, storefronts in Washington, D.C.?
Washington does allow, D.C. does allow medical. I'm not sure on the recreational side. Oh, and just to answer your question earlier about the closest towns that would allow adult use, it'd probably be Brunswick and Topson are the closest municipalities that have opted in for adult-use cultivation. And they may be good models to look at for their ordinances, how they've been able to control it and make sure that it's sustainable growth.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniele.
If this becomes federally legal, is that going to mean that we would still have to opt in under state rules? Or would the federal law mean it was legal and we should have ordinances already in place? Is kind of my question. If it becomes federally legal and we have nothing on the books, is it open?
Unless the state changes the regulations, you can still make, well, I mean, it's a lot, inter, interstate and interfet, you know, federal relations is a whole.
Federal relations is a whole area of study that, you know, the government can, you know, try to force that, you know, like I'm thinking of, you know, like highway speed limits, seatbelt laws, things like that, when, I'll use the word extortion, but you know, that's kind of a little mean. But where the, you know, you, you wouldn't, you know, receive highway block grant money if you didn't comply with certain federal law. I mean, the federal government could force or coerce the state into doing it, but the state laws would still have effect until the state did something to, to revoke that. So our representative, along with all the other representatives and senators, would have to make a conscious decision to say, nope, we're going to roll back Maine's regulations because it's legal federally and we're just going to let, you know, yard sale on all, on all marijuana everywhere, and there's no regulations. So I don't see that happening, but I can't, can't speak for, that's a legislative body that would have to make that decision, not us.
And in that situation, we'd want to have something in place.
You could still regulate it. Even if the state took away all their regulations, you would have, if you had something in land use that said, this use marijuana cultivation, that's not going to change our regulation about it, can exist in these environments, and it can, like, say you did, say the planning board did recommend something and we did pass it that said marijuana cultivation is allowed in this zone, that's on top of the state and on top of the federal regulations. So the feds say it's a Class 1 controlled substance, so you can't have it at all. The state says you can't have it under certain circumstances. And then Freeport says you can only have it in this district with this use, this many grow places, that kind of a thing. So all of those regulations are all on top of each other. If one of them gets pulled out from the bottom, the other two still exist. If two of them get pulled out from the bottom, ours is still in place.
Counsel Bradley.
I just want to say that federal preemption is one of the most complicated constitutional issues that exists, and for us to be opining about how legalization, federal legalization of marijuana would, would or would not preempt our local ordinances well beyond our capacity this evening. And I mean with all due respect, Peter, you tried, and I, I just think it's not something we should be using here. It's just hard to figure out until you know exactly what the feds say, whether they prohibit it, whether they permit it, whether they made it legal, and how they, how they addressed concurrent state legislation. And we have all kinds of issues in Maine related to our use of marine resources, for instance, that fall into many of those different categories with different results.
I mean, federal narcotics law applies, preempts state narcotics law, and yet the category one, Class 1 substance is not being enforced because the, the executive agency said, hey, we're not going to deal with it. I'm making it's point that, that even though the federal government says you can't do it, they're also saying, oh, but if you follow these regulations in this memo that we send out, we're not going to actually enforce that. So it's, even the laws don't mean the laws sometimes.
All right. I just want to remind everyone here that we're, we're actually not voting on an ordinance. We're voting on a recommendation to send to the planning board for further discussion and public hearing. And whether or not we're going to do that, that's the, that's the vote that we're going to have. Counsel O'Reilly.
The reason why I asked the question about, are there operations in Washington, D.C. is because Washington, D.C. is underneath the direct governance of the federal, federal government. And so since they have operations there, you know, seems like it's a pretty loose law.
Counsel LaPilch.
Question for Ms. Lister or Mr. Ingram. Has the federal government taken a stance, one way or the other, on enforcement? Have they published anything that said they are or are not going to enforce laws regarding marijuana?
The most recent guidance has been that they are continuing to maintain the priorities that were outlined in the COLE memo, which was issued in 2014, which basically said that the federal government would allow states to have regulated marijuana markets as long as they prioritized control in certain areas, prevention of distribution across state lines, prevention of access to children, prevention of involvement of organized crime, invention, prevention of use of firearms in the distribution, and making sure that no money laundering effectively is taking a place. Those priorities have remained the same.
And that's been around since 2014, you said?
Yes.
Three, it's on its third administration of that standard, so, Republican and Democrat.
Andy, do you have a brief follow-up?
Yeah, just one thing. When you get to worry about, when Jake was talking about the thing, in zoning ordinance, if it's not, if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. So you don't have to worry about making a law ahead of time because, you know, if they change the law, and we don't have one in, if we, this is a zoning issue. So we're trying to define this in a zoning issue, to permit it in a zone. So we can prohibit it just by not including it.
Right. Which is kind of where we are, where we are right.
Yeah, but you're talking about if it's, we have medical, we've permitted medical.
We did not. We have done nothing.
Well, the state has.
The state said it was okay.
You allow it to happen.
Yeah. Unless we prohibit it.
No, they were grandfathered in, the state, my understanding, is the state made a policy, two businesses came in, we did nothing, and then the state later changed it to say, okay, now towns have to opt in. So our two that are here are currently grandfathered. So it's not like somebody else can come in and open right now.
So we have nothing in our zoning to, at all? So right now it's prohibited, completely?
It is not prohibited, because they got state licensing.
Those two are permitted, but no more are.
Correct.
Because there's no zoning language.
Yeah, that's most, that's mostly accurate, yeah.
But because the state wrote it that way, anyway, you know, the state wrote it that way that we have to opt in now.
Okay.
Add to the confusion.
Yep.
Evening, council members. My name's David Stevenson. I wasn't sure whether or not I was going to speak. I recently purchased 24 Noble Drive, where we've been operating legal cannabis business for the last five years in Freeport. Again, basically invisible. You know, the smell isn't an issue, crime isn't an issue, there's no security issues. I use a bank. We're not looking to expand. We're simply just trying to grow the same plants in the same place, just under a more highly regulated market. And that's simply it. And that, you know, everyone's poo-pooing cannabis, but like, if you look at almost all the successful businesses in Freeport, they're selling alcohol. What do you think about the Maine Beer Company? What do you think about Cold River Vodka? I mean, we're talking about cannabis and alcohol, let's just compare the two. You don't see people going home and beating their wives after too many joints. They might eat all the food in the fridge, but like, this is, you know, there's just this stigma attached to it, because it is federally legal. But that doesn't mean it's right. You know, the people of Maine have voted on this, the people of Freeport have voted on this. Half the country is, more than half the country is legal. And like, the walls just need to come down. People just need to wake up. Like, you know, I love Freeport. I, I love the vision. You know, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to cast this murky cloud on it. You know, like, I'm all about, I have two kids that go to school in Freeport. I have employees that live in Freeport. I pay taxes, you know, I have a healthcare plan for my employees. I'm bringing jobs to the community, to the state. So I've been up here for three, four years now, asking the same thing, simple request. It's just, you don't, I'm not asking for more businesses to come to Freeport. I'm asking specifically for my business and Peter's business to just allow us to keep doing what we're doing so we can feed our kids and, you know, like, help some people relax and enjoy the great outdoors. Enjoy their meal. Enjoy, it enhances life, much like alcohol. But alcohol, you can, you know, can be very dangerous as well. I'm not saying that cannabis is like, you know, completely harmless and needs to be regulated, but similar to alcohol. It can be used responsibly. People use it responsibly every day in all walks of life. So that's my piece. I hope that you listen. I hope that, I'll answer, let me just finish. I just, I hope that we can come to a reasonable agreement. I'm not asking for any expansion. I'm just asking for a chance to run the business that I've been running for five years in this town legally and accepted in the community. Thank you. You have a question?
Counsel O'Reilly.
Do you operate or have other venues in the?
We're trying to open a store in Portland on Congress Street, actually.
Okay, so that's next, and it's going to be recreational medical?
Well, it all really comes down to this. You know, if I can, if I can switch, if Freeport opts in, allows my business to operate in the adult use, then I could open up an adult-use store, which has a much higher chance of survival as an adult-use store in this market.
You can purchase from other manufacturers?
That's true.
Other growers?
Yep.
So you, and you.
Yeah, I could. But it'd be great to be able to sell my product in my store, you know, so.
And Portland has a pretty stiff fee for a?
They do. Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward, Dan.
So if the question were just, can two existing businesses continue to do what they've been doing? We wouldn't be having this discussion. You are coming here asking for an expansion of use and cultivation to recreational. And I'll speak for myself. If I could be assured that that would not expand to sale of recreational products in stores in a town in which 4 million people arrive every year, I wouldn't be opposed to that either. I think that's close to what John's position is, although he can speak for himself. But it is the concern that you're opening a recreational store in Portland because you want to sell your product, that once you get the opportunity to grow recreationally in Freeport, you'll want an opportunity to sell it in a store in downtown Freeport. And once we allow you to grow it recreationally, the whole concept of violating or offending the brand of Freeport we're working so hard to, to develop, will, will go by the by. And by the by, as soon as we allow you to do recreational here, the grandfathering of cultivation goes by the by. And we have more cultivators in town, and we have more.
Again, that's up to your recommendation, right? That's what we're talking about tonight, is what your recommendation could be. So you could recommend that only businesses in this town that are already here could opt in, but no other businesses are allowed in.
How would, how could you assure me?
You're the one that would write an ordinance.
The question I have is, how could you assure me that in the future you would never expand your recreational cultivation to consumer sales of recreational marijuana in the downtown of my, of my town?
I don't want, I don't want, I mean, I, I would be open to that, but I know that that's a big pushback. It seems like that you don't want retail in Freeport. I have no problem with that.
But you, you sell your business to someone else, and they want it, and now, now we're dealing with it. I guess that's the concern.
Again, if you ban retail. Again, if you ban retail sales in Freeport, then it's a non-issue.
No, it's not, it, it, because then they come before us, or the next count, the people, the people, you or the guy who's growing, the other farm, I'm sorry, and, and you want to expand because as you say, well, cultivation is falling off as a market, I need to stay in business, I, I, I employ all of these people, I educate all these kids, I'm a good citizen, and you are, but you, but you are affecting the sense of what Freeport is.
I've been here for five years, I'm part of Freeport, and I'm not going anywhere.
Well, that's, that's, you know-
Hopefully, you know, that's the plan.
Well, if my concern is, is, is not valid-
So your concern is that you don't want retail sales in Freeport?
I don't want to see an expansion of cultivation to recreation.
And I'm not expanding anything. I'm just, I'm asking for you to allow me to, to participate in the adult use program. I'm not looking to expand my operation.
No, but you are looking to expand.
It's a 10,000 square foot warehouse zoning, I can't go over that.
I get it, but you are using, you are asking us to opt into a program that will allow you to sell your product into a recreational market, which you cannot if we don't opt in. Am I wrong?
Yeah, you're wrong.
Am I wrong, Don? I don't think so.
It's, it's exactly what he's asking. He's doing the same thing. What I think would change is what regulations would apply and who he gets to sell the product to. So it's the same operation, growing the same plants, it would be more regulated under adult use, and he would sell to a different customer. In his case, he's selling to himself anyway, so not much really changes, I don't think.
What changes is the product can go from medical use to recreational use.
Right.
That's, that's what we're-
But it doesn't change the cultivation aspect of it.
I understand that the thought, the square footage could stay the same, the plant would look the same, smell the same, but-
I just wanted to make it clear, I'm not looking to expand, I'm just looking to participate in the adult use program. If you guys can help, that would be awesome, and myself and my family would really appreciate. And my 30 employees. Thank you.
Call the question. Chip, you had your hand up for a minute there.
Yeah, I, it's coming. It's been coming my whole life, 30 years and now we're here. I'm not 30, I'm a little older than that. But ever since I've known about it, it's been coming, and it just keeps getting more progressive and more progressive. So we're going to be dealing with this for the next 30 years. I think we need to get ahead of it, and this regulation allows us to do that, and they're more regulated. How many times have you heard a business saying, hey, I'd like to be more regulated? That doesn't happen. And whether we do this tonight, if we don't do it tonight, it comes through as a referendum, which I can see happening very easily, and then we lose control, or a lot of control, because now it's coming through the referendum. Whereas now, if we allow this, we can limit to two people, we can say no recreational sales or no adult use sales in town, and then in 10 years, when another board's up here, that'll change, and the whole thing will change. And when I came up here as a kid, because I used to come to Maine, I've always wanted to live in Maine, Freeport was a place where you could get anything, which was great. We'd come to town, we'd go to Alabama, and I'd get this, 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 and this, I can get, it was a shopping town. We're not looking to be a shopping town, but we're now being an experiential town. Um, here's an experience. I'm not saying we go there, but, but, so, so are we going to say, okay, you can experience everything this way, and these people come, you can't do it that way? I, I don't think that's a good marketing strategy. I think we should be open to everybody, so.
Question, but not a second.
I guess you can tell which way I'm voting.
So it's clear that there's a lot more that this group wants to discuss, and I'll just point out that the vote that we are about to take, because there is an action item in front of us, is to recommend a specific, two specific uses, cultivation and manufacture, to the planning board, to then define whether or not it gets into the land use ordinance, and how, and how many, and, and all of the other specificities that go on. So this, I, I guess I just, I'm, I'm stuck on that this is not the last time we're going to be talking about this.
Could be.
And, no, it's not.
Could be.
It won't be.
It won't be.
Am I wrong? It won't be, even if we stop.
Even if we don't vote it.
The next council, I know, but this is my council, right? This is the one I got elected to?
You're, you're still going to be on here, it'll come back from the planning board to this council while you're still here to be able to vote on it.
If you get four votes to send it to the planning board, if you don't, it won't come to the planning board, and we won't have it in my lifetime on this council, because this is my last term, you could bet on it.
Future council may decide.
Thank you, Doc. Appreciate it.
Uh, so I'll go back to what I started, it's, maybe, maybe there's less to, to discuss, maybe I'm wrong. We've had a call to question. We're ready to vote?
We don't have a question yet. No one's read the, you know, Daniel.
I don't think we had a motion to close the public hearing.
There is no public hearing.
There's no public hearing, yeah.
There's, there's a motion for Med to call the question, but no one's seconded it, so.
No one's read the question yet.
And I'm happy to keep talking if there's something-
Can I share some comments? I imagine people might be interested. Um, I, I have a lot of respect for people that are guided by their, their gut, their feeling, their emotion, and are painting this as an all or nothing question, but I'm not there. I'm looking at all the information, I'm looking at the data, looking at the industry. For other reasons, I spent a lot of the last few years studying the industry. I don't use the product, my family doesn't use the product, as far as I know. I don't have any financial gain one way or the other. But I am mindful that if, if it's going to happen, I would prefer to regulate it. I don't at all-
Support the notion of retail cannabis?
Anywhere in Freeport. I don't support the notion of cannabis anywhere downtown in our commercial zones. I don't think I'm going to change my mind on that, and I, it's not consistent with what we said we wanted in town, and I haven't heard the residents kind of say that they want pot stores on Main Street. So that's not what we're voting on tonight. When we did ask our town to weigh in on it five years ago, the majority of the town voted to legalize cannabis. So that, in my mind, carries a lot of weight when we say, who are we representing and what do they want? That's, that's in my mind. The two businesses that are here, I've been here for a number of years, and as we've heard, they haven't generated any complaints, there haven't been any issues, um, uh, they've been very lightly regulated. If we allow them to go under adult use, they would be more regulated. They've covered the issue well, I don't need to go into that. We, the seven of us, have an opportunity to be specific about what we allow, where we allow it, how we allow it, and under what circumstances. We get to set those rules. So we can do things like insist that there are no orders present, we can insist how far they need to be from churches and schools, and what zones they can be in and can't be in, and how big they need to be, and how many of them we allow in town. So the businesses that are before us, they're wholesale operations, they're not inviting visitors, members of the public to come in and, and buy cannabis. That's not allowed for that kind of operation. I, I don't think this is a gateway issue. I don't think voting yes on this requires us to vote yes on six other things that come down the road. I don't think that allowing cultivation encourages people to use or not use cannabis. If it doesn't get grown here, it's going to get grown somewhere else. If you want to use it, you're going to use it, whether it's grown in Freeport or not. I'm pretty confident that we, among the seven of us, have the capability to make these nuanced decisions about what we allow and what components of it we allow and don't allow, without saying that it's an all, you know, up for grabs, or anyone can, can buy and smoke pot in downtown Freeport. I think essentially banning these businesses from town, effectively banning these businesses from town, is not what we want to do, not what we want to be known for. We kind of had that discussion with the clambers, if you've been doing something for a number of years, it would really stink to have the rug pulled out from under you and allow you, prohibit you from making a living the way you've been doing that. So my view tonight, we are not opting in, in any way, tonight. If we move this to the planning board tonight, they have public hearings several months from now, it comes back to us, potentially with a different council up here. There are many phases to go through where we can weigh in and say we want it to be like this, we don't want it to be like that. So I'm not comfortable with cutting it off at the knees and saying it's all or nothing and saying nothing. I'd prefer us to say, let's see what we would allow, and then take a vote on that when it comes back in six months or so, and say, under these conditions, would we allow it? Or would we want to tweak it?
Counsel Riley, and then we got to get going, because we're been on this issue for a while.
I appreciate Counselor Pilch's remarks on this topic and summation of what he sees, and so now I second the call of the question.
Would you like me to read, would you like me to read the question?
No, 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 Counselor Bradley-
Motion is not open for debate, it's a straight-up-down vote on whether you're going to go straight to the question.
Right. Okay, so we have a be it ordered. I can't remember who opened it, Counselor Pilch.
Would you like me to read that?
Please read the be it ordered.
Be it ordered that the Freeport Town Council directs the planning board to develop land use standards as the planning board deems appropriate, to allow both cannabis cultivation and cannabis manufacturing and processing uses within Freeport. Said regulations to include the determination of appropriate zoning districts, the develop of any recommended performance standards, and the development of any other relevant land use regulations that the planning board deems necessary.
Second. Okay. So we're going to take a vote on whether to recommend this to the planning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to three. Thank you all for lively discussion, thanks for the members of the public for participating. There'll be lots more opportunities to do so. Our next item is our last action item of the evening, item number 156-21. It's related to an approval of a order of vacation, which is to vacate, proposing to vacate a 40-foot-wide unnamed road, also known as a paper street, running parallel to Lower Flying Point. The unnamed road is approximately 40 feet wide and begins at the intersection with Lower Flying Point Road, whence it runs parallel to Lower Flying Point Road along the boundary of lots 1 through 28, as shown on a subdivision plan entitled Plan of Flying Point Shores, Section 3, dated October 1949, here and after known as the Plan, which Plan is recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 35, page 44. We've had some discussion on this already, and Peter, do we have a quick summary to catch us all up on where we are with this paper street vacation?
Yep, so since the last meeting, we sent out notices to all of the property owners, well, we have not sent out notices, the petitioners, council has sent out notices, our notices that were authorized by the town council chair, and by the way, this is Ms. Lewis, who's the, who's the original petitioner, for a few of you that haven't met her, a few of you do remember her from council last year. The, the notices went out, we received one inquiry, I think, at the town hall from someone who received them, saying, what is this? And when we explained what it is, they said, no, that's great, that's what we want. We were hoping it wasn't the town, my microphone's off, we were hoping that what you were saying isn't the town was going to make this a road, we're glad you're vacating this road. So, so, yep, zero input from anybody else, which is pretty consistent, I think, with what you're, you and your immediate neighbors know, correct?
So that's, that's where we're at. The, the abutters do have, or sorry, the mortgagees and the property owners within that plan do have one year to file a claim if they believe that there are damages. We're not anticipating that, but, clock is ticking from the date you provided the notice.
Any other questions for the town manager on this particular issue? Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered, the municipal officers of the town of Freeport, Maine, pursuant to 23 MRSA 3027-A, having given best practicable, practicable notice to all abutting property owners and the Freeport Planning Board, hereby order the vacation of the 40-foot-wide unnamed road running parallel to Lower Flying Point Road. The unnamed road is approximately 40 feet wide and begins at the intersection of Lower Flying Point Road, whence it runs parallel to said, to said Lower Flying Point Road along the boundary of lots 1 through 28, as shown on a subdivision plan entitled Plan of Flying Point Shores, Section 3, dated October 1949, therein after the Plan. Which Plan is recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 35, page 44, and appended hereto and hereby incorporated as Exhibit A to this order is a list of all the names of the owners of lots shown on said Plan, together with their mortgagees of record.
Second.
We had, we had the outline in our packet, right?
Yep, and I've got the materials from last summer, when we, when we first discussed this, that are in the packet, so, the backup materials. And the order of vacation is right here, that would be signed by council chair and recorded in the registry. And we wait for 11 months and three weeks, or one week, and see if anybody complains.
Any further questions about this action?
Why would someone complain?
So these can be very contentious. I think Counselor Bradley probably has a recollection, because he asked a lot of the questions at the last meeting, that these, and I know we've got some other people who've been involved in these in the audience throughout the years, and former council chair Sachs in the audience, and Ms. Vayou was instrumental in vacating another one of these, and I think probably Andrew was dealing with this back when he was on the town council at the time, so.
Everyone's starting to get a migraine back there, just thinking about this. These can be enormous if they go somewhere. So, for example, if there's a road that goes from a paper street that's not a road, that goes over someone's property from a road to like, a water body or another road, we've vacated a few in the past, recently, that connect two roads, and those have been really intense, even though it's only like two lots long, it's been a discussion about like, well, what's the odds that somebody's ever going to want, the town essentially is ever going to want to build that road to connect those two roads? And you really have to go through a process to see that, in this case, in this case, the road goes, the paper street goes across what were all two sets of, two rows of properties, and they've all been connected since then, in common ownership. So it made a lot of sense when the original plan was drawn, because you needed it to get to the second row, but, you know, over the 50, 70 years since that plan was first drawn, 72 years now, people have put all of those separated lots into common ownership, so they're double-deep lots that go all the way down to the water, if you look at that. Those tax limits used to be cut in half along the paper street, so. No controversy on this one, but they tend to be very controversial. We have a lot that are controversial here in town that I'm not bringing up for you to discuss, because it would take like, you know, 10 council meetings to come to a conclusion.
Thank you.
And they've had other, you can look at like Cape Elizabeth has had a couple lawsuits over vacant paper streets, some big court actions.
But nobody can build on the paper street right now, right in the 40-foot area, I would assume.
Correct.
So that's the big change that we're making, is that now somebody could build on that spot.
Maybe, there are still private rights that have to be sorted out, but that's an issue for the, that's an issue for the private property owners to deal with. If the town's aware of them, it could be an issue, but they could also work on their own to get those vacated if they want. The paper street is only the town's right to lay out a road there. So you're essentially saying, we're giving away our right to ever build a street across your land and 10 other people, and 11, however many it is, other people that are down there. That doesn't mean that you have to give up your right to walk over your neighbor's lawn, or they have to give up their right to walk over your lawn if you're on either side of it, but-
Just the town.
It's just the town's right.
Right.
And in this area, they don't want to go that direction, they want to go closer to the water.
Which can be incredibly controversial, if the road goes somewhere and somebody stands up and says, but someday, the town might want to build that street. But we can't think of any instance where the town wants to build this street, we've been over this pretty thoroughly, so.
All right, so we'll take a vote on the matter, it's been moved and seconded and read, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you for sitting through this long meeting.
Where's the vacation?
Now you can take a vacation, in addition to the order of vacation, so.
That concludes the action items on our agenda. I'll just note the patience of our former counselor and now State Representative Sachs for hanging in there till the end. We have two items on our other business, and I believe the second one is not going to happen, correct? We're not taking up the-
I was prepared to waste about 10 minutes of everyone's time, but I think we should do it in September instead.
Main Water is not here, so I think we can forego that. The podium is yours.
So I'm the only thing standing between you and adjournment?
We've been waiting to hear from you.
No, no, we're happy to listen to you.
We've been waiting for it.
I've been there, y'all, I know.
Okay, we have snacks, we're good.
Hello, wonderful town council members. I have absolutely enjoyed watching the deliberations, and I do, I miss it, and I appreciate you having me here. The reason that I came tonight is because I am very, as hopefully people at home- The reason that I came tonight is because I am very, as hopefully people at home can know, I feel very strongly that relationships between local and state officials really need to be close and with lots of communication. And so when the legislature convened in January, and just sindai, or adjourned, July 19th, we passed three different budgets, went through 1,900 bills, and so I've written you a five-page memo. And so of course, it's not comprehensive, and the reason I wanted to be here tonight is number one, to invite you and any members here in Freeport who'd like to call and email me, I have the same cell phone number I had when I was on the council, I haven't changed it, and to just let me know what's important to you. I'm very lucky that many people have during this session, and so I feel really excited about that. Great communication. I didn't put everything in this five-page memo, but I would ask Mr. Joseph if you don't mind posting it as it did go to the council to be with the council materials, so that anybody can peruse it at their leisure. And I didn't put in things that you often have talked about here. I was very involved in the remote participation bill, LD 32, with our good friends from Bustins Island, who are amazing, and I understand you did a policy last meeting about that. I also didn't talk about the governor's veto of a video service provider bill, that John Goran, who's one of our town employees, was instrumental in trying to bring forward, unfortunately it was vetoed. That has some municipal implications, that's an entirely different session, but just know that I've worked on some of those things. But I brought these five pages together under subject areas, just so you know, some of the high points of things that happened in Augusta that may impact our wonderful town. And in that memo, I've talked about tax relief, which was one of the things serving on the taxation committee that I served on this past year, was really important to me. I think every single member of, I think my name is no longer Melanie Sachs, the initials stand for municipal revenue sharing, pretty sure that's what it is, because that's one of the best things we can do.
I see what you did there.
See what I did there? Made a little pun there.
It's late.
Because that's one of the biggest things that I can do, is advocate that for property tax relief here in our town. I remember those days, when there was so much wrangling in Augusta, that we couldn't even set our budgets on the council, because it was being decimated. This is a great equitable way to lift all boats in the state and bring that revenue sharing back. And I'm so excited that within the taxation committee, couldn't get a unanimous vote the first time we did it, but we managed to do it for both budgets, to bring it up to the levels at 4.75 and then 5%, which, as I said in the memo, is a 61% increase from what we had last year's budget, actual 2021 numbers, to now. Still a budget nerd, totally love this stuff, because I know how much it's, how important it is to our community. Also been trying to put in things like the homestead exemption, Freeport only gets reimbursed 70% as every municipality does, and the homestead exemption is a great tax relief program. I hope everybody watching, I put it in almost every newsletter that I have, which has great distribution, to get people to take that tax exemption. And I will also say, today, a senior messaged me saying, thanks for the news you can use for the, what a lot of people don't know is a property tax fairness credit. That's another program that people don't know a lot about. I've hyperlinked all of it, so you, you or anybody else can ask me questions about it. But because she hasn't filed her taxes, because she's on social security, she didn't know to go back and look. She did, she's saving several thousand dollars. This is the work that we do. This is the work you do, this is the work that I'm doing, committed to making things better, because I know you've heard and I've heard over and over again, people want to stay in their homes, they want to retire here in Freeport, they want to be able to buy a home in Freeport, and stay and raise their kids here in Freeport. So all of those pieces that I've put in around the different exemptions that people can have, the funding that we've put in, I think is a really tangible way to say, this is Augusta working for you. And I say Augusta, because these were bipartisan budgets, overwhelmingly bipartisan budgets, so that's really exciting to me. I've put in a bunch of stuff about health and wellness, things that impact our long-term care workforce, which we have several nursing facilities, and our independence association, which we value and love here in Freeport. So making sure those workers are cared for and paid adequately under main care regulations, which has not happened, we put in a bunch of money for that. As you've no doubt talked about, and I have talked about extensively, is the 55% funding for schools, raising that, keeping it at that level, yay, John Egan says, finally, 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 moving that. And again, you can see the numbers that I've put in there, 433,000, $194.66, is incredibly important, to put that to tax relief again, for our communities, all three of them. I just have to have a shout out, my favorite, one of my favorite bills was free lunch and breakfast for kids in the schools. That's currently being federally funded, that may continue to be, but we put money in the budget just in case. I worked the breakfast program at Mass Landing for many years, I think you know how important it is for me to feed kids, been doing it almost my whole career, and, and there's so many good outcomes of that. And Nutrition Director for RSG 5, Erin Dow, and I have continued to work on the End Hunger Task Force 2030, high gluten name, hopefully will be some concrete actions to really move the needle on hunger in Maine. So excited about that. I, I mentioned a bunch of environmental bills, again, those were more because the constituents here in Freeport really care about the environment, has less municipal, although there are some very exciting municipal opportunities in that funding, always happy to talk to you about that. And particularly, though, the Extended Producer Responsibility Bill, which will impact businesses here, and I know you have struggled with, it came right after I left the council, but the whole downturn in recycling and the cost of that, I followed it closely with this council. This bill, Extended Producer Responsibility Bill, is supposed to help share those costs with both producers and to give municipalities a break, in terms of getting, recouping some of those costs for recycling. So it's one step in the right direction. Talked to many businesses here, if businesses have any concerns, there's large exemptions for small businesses, that's a difference from when it came in 2019, so just know that there's large exemptions, I've talked with many businesses, happy to work with people to figure that out, if they're worried about the impact on them. Economic workforce and housing, I was part of the bipartisan legislative housing group, we worked over 40 bills to try and help, again, move the needle on housing, we know how important it is. Many, many jobs and economic workforce development bills also went through, and there are many, and I gave you links both to the supplemental budget, but also the American Rescue Plan funding, which has buckets and buckets of money for workforce development and training, money for heritage industries, schools, and education. So it's really exciting, all of these different targeted investments. So given the money that we have from the federal government, putting it directly to enhance the infrastructure, to advance the investments in schools, the environment, and the workforce, really some very exciting pieces. So that was my three minutes, you didn't even have the timer on, Mr. Joseph. There was, there is quite a bit that happened this session. Again, I gave you the memo with links to the actual bills, links to the actual budget, some of the work that I did, but I just, more than anything else, wanted to say that I'm here and available, and I have so appreciated the conversations with all of you that have reached out to talk about different initiatives, and if there's something that you'd like to see, either you and I have some folks who have asked me to meet with them over the summer, to talk about other sessions. I also get to work on a taxation study, so I'm pretty psyched about that. So my work doesn't end, I just helped somebody today with the unemployment system, so if you have constituents who are having trouble with the unemployment system, we were able to work it out within hours, where he had spent eight hours on the phone trying to reach DOL, Department of Labor, and just hadn't. So I'm here to help. Much of what I did here is what I just do from a different seat, so very excited to do that. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Quick question, Melanie. My day job, today I got asked, how can the representatives from the tribes, where can they go to find out what specifically is in the ARP funding, the buckets and buckets that you were just referring to? Because I know there's some designation in there for Native Americans and tribal governments, but I don't know, other than going into the gigantic wall of BIA, where, where else they might go? Is there a, you know, is there a summary of that available, either at your level or potentially at our congressional representative?
So there is a, the link that I have at the very end, page five, says, here for the American Rescue Plan proposal, and it really does say, here's 2 million for the Permanent Commission on Race Indigenous Tribes and Women, I think it is, I just call it the Permanent Commission. So it says that exactly, 50 million for housing, whatever it is. So there's, those buckets are pretty well defined, and it's a pretty long list, but much easier in a summary to look at that. If a tribal member has a specific question, either they can talk to Rena Newell, who's the tribal representative from the Pasquattie, or honestly, Teresa Purse, who's the Chair of the Appropriations Committee in the House, I've gone to her with specific questions as well, and they've been delightful to work with. So if anybody has a specific question about where do I fit in with X, let me know. Because I've also been working with both Freeport and Pownell, to make sure that they know how to get their, your allocation from American Rescue Plan funding, and making sure that that process is as smooth as possible for our local communities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm happy to continue to do that. Apparently, there was supposed to be something published today, but they got an extension. I think the last thing we heard was August 3rd, but I think they're probably going to have a extension. So Freeport is, is scheduled to receive $850,000 through American Rescue Plan funding. So that is a conversation for you all, to say, how would you like that to be spent? And Counselor Egan, and Peter Joseph, and Economic Development Director Keith McBride and myself, were on a call with Cumberland County, to even talk to them about what are their priorities, can some of that $52 million of Cumberland County money come our way as well? So there's lots of potential within these dollars to do some really great investments.
Great. Council Riley.
I really appreciate your being here tonight, and I would hope that the next time that we invite you, or that you want to come, that you're not placed at the end of the agenda, because what you bring forward to us is very meaningful to, and the community probably just didn't hang out long enough, so we can replay the meeting, and that's all good, but it would be nice to have you at the, at the start of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I understand, though, I remember public hearings and where they have to fall in the agenda, and when you have one meeting in August, I totally get it. But I'm happy to come back as often as you'd like me to, to talk about a particular issue, truly.
Great feedback, great, great input.
Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie.
Glad to be here.
Peter?
Glad to be here.
Just want to thank not just you, but all the other municipally-minded, you know, legislators, there's a whole bunch of you now, which is fantastic. So I've commented on this several times, but I think over the past two, one or two elections, we've seen a swing of former municipal officials get involved at the state level who have lived through arguing with the state on all these issues, and there's definitely an ear there, I feel like, among, especially among the people in the finance side of things, that like, hey, it's all tied together, it's all, you know, steal from this pocket to put money in that pocket, it's all going to hurt the taxpayer in the end, it's not magic, you can't just take the municipal money and give it to the state, or take the state money and give it to the town or city. So there's a really good understanding of how those parts fit together, so I think that's great.
Thank you. And I'm deeply grateful for my colleagues on the council when I was there, and for the continued dialogue with all of you, because that really is incredibly important to me, to, to continue that dialogue.
Thanks for hanging in with us.
No problem. I really do encourage folks to look at that memo, and if you have any questions at all, it's fairly thorough, because you didn't know me by now, and, but there is so much to it, and if there is something I didn't touch in that, that you have questions about, please let me know. But thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for being at the front end, too, about chief nurse, that was nice to see you make the proclamation.
Say, chief nurse, I'm going to come, you know that. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Riley?
There's nothing further to discuss, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 10:20.
Can you take this in to get neuterized?